Six forty-eight P M. And I would like to begin the meeting with acknowledgement that the Langley School District is located on the traditional lands of the Kwantlin, Kansaw, Matzki, and Semiamu First Nations. And also, we have a couple of announcements. The first one is that you'll see many of us are wearing T-shirts this morning, or until it's evening, today, to acknowledge that it's Diversity and Respect Week. The Langley School District is pleased to recognize Diversity and Respect Week. On January twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, at the regular meeting of the Board of Education, the following motion was passed. Did the Langley District establish a Diversity and Respect Week to coincide with Pink Shirt Day in February to promote awareness, acceptance, reconciliation, and inclusion for all members of the school community? During this week, schools across the district will be recognizing and celebrating the diversity found within our schools through lessons, activities, assemblies, and other events that serve to promote empathy, understanding, and the importance of inclusion. This work reflects the district's mission, vision, and values that state that our schools foster an inclusive and accepting culture. This year, the district is also pleased to launch a new T-shirt which embodies these important values. And there will be a presentation from Langley students later in the agenda on diversity and respect. You'll also notice that we are wearing Moose Hide. We received these. This is in acknowledgement of the Moose Hide Campaign. And the Moose Hide Campaign is a grassroots movement of Indigenous and non-Indigenous men and boys who are standing up against violence towards women and children. So when you wear a Moose Hide, signifies your commitment to honor, respect, and protect the women and children in your life, and to work together with other men and boys to end violence against women and children. So we are helping spread the word about this campaign by sharing the suit. So with that, we do have some introductions before we get to our report from in camera. So I'll start on my far left. We have trustee Wilson, trustee Rod Ross, we have trustee David Todd. To my immediate left, we have secretary treasurer Brian Nisley. To my far right, we have trustee Tony Ward, trustee Suzanne Perot, vice chair Shelley Coburn, and to my immediate right, we have superintendent Ward Stewart. And starting over here, we have assistant superintendent Barry Bunyan, we have our wonderful executive assistant Judy Swanson, and then we have assistant secretary treasurer Shin Chan, assistant superintendent Mal Gill, assistant superintendent Woody Bradford. You have some fans here. We don't have fans. We expect to be hooted for two. Come on, help us out. Communications manager Joette Abshire, and we have IT technical support Dale Vo. We also have, from our communications, Tony Bondi, and we have quite the team at the back with IT technical support of a few more people, Paul Boba and Toby Hyde. And then on our partner groups, we have, from QP eighteen fifty-one, we have Cheryl Barnum, we have QP twelve sixty president Raylene Shalock, LTA president Tanya Kerr, LTA vice president Graham Elsbein, we have LTA vice president Ellen Borowski. Sorry. We also have Deepak president Alicia Remple, LPBPA president John Puzak, and then we have QP twelve sixty vice president Monique Pyers. Did I get everybody? Did I miss anybody? Who did I miss? Okay, sorry. Just went off my list. Sorry, Monique's not here. Okay, okay, no, it's not here. Okay. Sorry about that. All right. And with that, I believe we've gotten most people. All right. So we are now going to go to our report from in camera.
In camera, we discuss personnel and property.
And then we are going to move on to our consent agenda. So with our consent agenda, we need a mover for the consent agenda. Moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Perot. Comments on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda? And that is approved. Now we're going on to our agenda. So we have, agenda here, we need a mover, please. Moved by trustee Perot, seconded by trustee Todd. Any changes? No, seeing none. All those in favor? Adopting the agenda as presented? Okay, we're on to our next presentation, Diversity and Respect Week.
Thank you, trustees. I just wanted to take a minute just to introduce our next presenters. I'll introduce Ballen Moore, the principal once again of Walnut Grove Secondary School. Diversity in Respect Week in Langley is certainly a fantastic week. We celebrate the work that we do all year long. And part of my role, an exciting role, is being a part of the Inclusive Education Committee. And for the first time, and I believe, and Suzanne, trustee Perot can probably speak to this as well, the first time we actually had students come to our meeting. And they presented to us, and I think after they left, actually while they were there, we said, "You're going to get on a speaking tour now for sure." And true to my words, they're all, or some of them are back, and they've been to Deepak already for a presentation, and they're here this evening as well. The students, and I will give principal Moore the a minute to talk as well. When they left, certainly as a committee, we thought these students really exemplified what it is that we're looking for our youth to really accomplish around inclusion. And we thought, from that point, that trustees and the public needed to hear their message. And the message came from a really special place, and I just want to let Mr. Moore tell us about where that came from.
It's wonderful when we see synergy that happens in a school district, and that flows from the school all the way to the most important assets we have in our school district, which is our students. When I think about what we were doing at Walnut Grove Secondary, what we looked at as a school, as one of our major pillars in the school, was to become a more inclusive place. And I think that's a goal that perhaps every single school in British Columbia is aspiring to. That evolved from a group of staff that really are pushing the whole focus of inclusion forward, towards our action plan for learning, towards another hat that I wear in the Langley community, and that's the co-chair of the Human Dignity Coalition. Very proud to have trustee Marty Wilson as part of that. I know Suzanne Perot has been one of our strongest advocates, and I've seen many of you at the meetings. On December the fifth, we met at D W Poppy Secondary, and we invited students from across the high schools and middle schools in the district. And the whole focus was to make our schools more inclusive spaces. We opened that dialogue up. We wanted the students to have a voice. But partway through the meeting, it was made very clear that what we wanted was our students to have a call to action. It's one thing to talk about inclusion, there's another thing to actually move it forward in schools. And so what I would like to do is also introduce to you a staff member that was really instrumental in the message that you're about to see. This is Kim Robinson, who's standing behind me. And Kim is not only the leader of our champion, or the sponsor of our Champions for Change in the, in our Langley, or at Walnut Grove, she's also an AP English teacher who does a ton of work with the ministry, and she has a deep passion for inclusion. So when the students came up with this message, and this, she will tell you that this is their words, but it was always nice to have someone that was there to help edit it, who also had a passion for inclusion, or has a passion for inclusion. With that being the message, I would like to introduce to you some of our students. I'm going to have them introduce themselves, one by one, as they come forward, and they're going to share their statement, diversity statement for you.
Hi, I'm Eli Hacker.
Hi, I'm Samuel Jones.
Hi, I'm Julia Kobianza.
I'm Justine Sharon.
I'm Zachy Sude.
I'm Jayden Jones.
I'm Maya Balzerini.
And I'm Indiana Bateman.
Now, before we begin, we'd like to thank the members of the board for having us here today. We'd like to thank Mr. Moore and Ms. Robinson for their help throughout this process, and we would like to thank everyone who has worked so hard to facilitate Diversity and Respect Week. Surrounding our call to action, it really began at the Human Dignity Forum, like Mr. Moore said, on December the fifth. We, some of our group members attended, and we were inspired by all the nice discussions that we had at this meeting. She would come up with a call to action to really target some of the negative things that are going on in our schools.
Yeah, so our goal was to create a statement which expresses our need for change while also maintaining our school's core values. We wanted to shed light on how we've watched our community become desensitized to certain derogatory terms and phrases, often used in a joking manner, but that target a group of minorities in a negative way. This language is deeply harmful to others, and eliminating it from our vocabulary is vital to fostering an inclusive school environment. We know that change is difficult, especially concerning a topic of this magnitude, but we had to ask ourselves, what steps can we take to facilitate change, and how can we tackle these challenging topics in a way that we believe they will have the importance they deserve?
To close Diversity Week, this Friday at ten thirty A M., senior volunteer students will read this call to action that we've written to over two thousand Walnut Grove Secondary students. This is our way to evoke change. Now here is the call to action that we will be reading to the students.
At Walnut Grove, our values lie in inclusivity, diversity, and respect. We apply these values to make our school environment that one that is welcoming and loving towards everyone who walks through our doors.
We recognize that our school has come a long way throughout the years in appreciating diversity and respecting all. We have developed so many different clubs and sports teams that offer everyone a chance to get involved. We celebrate Pride, or Pride Week and International Women's Day together. We welcome students from all over the world, and we learn about the history and traditions of Canadian Indigenous peoples, including the injustice they have suffered. We have programs such as Lunch Buddies and Coffee Cart to help make our students with special needs feel more included. However, members of the student body have noticed some ways in which we can yet improve inclusivity within our school community.
This is a call to action. Recently, throughout W G S S, there has been a shift in the way we treat and speak to one another. Throughout the years, bullying has evolved. It is no longer as blatantly obvious as it used to be. Bullying takes many forms. Stein remarks, gossip, and harassment are becoming more and more common among students, and it's time to take a stand.
Hate speech towards minorities in the form of slurs, gestures, conduct, and writing is becoming more and more prevalent within our school. It should be understood that that is not okay. Disrespectful comments being made towards and about individuals based on race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, or disability are not acceptable within our community. Most of the time, you might not think twice about hearing language like this in the halls, as this kind of talk is becoming normalized within our school.
This needs to change. To provide you with some specific examples, we've noticed an increase in the use of the N-word, the R-word, which is used to target individuals with disabilities, LGBTQ plus terms that are used in inappropriate and derogatory manner, as well as hurtful jokes and careless language referencing to mental health.
This type of speech is harmful to students who are experiencing these emotions, or have experienced the loss of others due to mental health struggles. We've normalized jokes like this, and it's time to take responsibility for our consequences. In case you aren't aware, these words and phrases actually have hurtful roots and origins, which means that whenever you use them out loud, they target a group of minorities and affect those people in a deeper sense than you may know, even if it's used in a joking way. Many times, a person who is hurt by these terms may not react outwardly, and you may not even realize that they're having an impact.
Along with this, we have noticed things like the N-word pass being tossed around. It became a meme, and now the jokes surrounding it have also become a normal thing to hear in our own hallways at W G S S. Asking for and/or receiving a pass in no way condones this action. We ask you to make a conscious effort to direct your values to support those groups which have been discriminated against for so long. We also ask that you acknowledge, in some cases, words are more than just words, and that they carry an immense weight with them.
Everyone has a right to feel safe and valued in our school environment. This is a human right, and we can no longer tolerate behavior like this at W G S S. Putting an end to hate speech, bullying, and discrimination within our school is no simple task. We thank you for your courage in joining us in this.
Grade ten, eleven, and twelve students, we ask you to realize that the grade eights just entering our school, as well as juniors finding their way, look to you as role models. Show them what it means to be a Gator, an individual who is welcoming to all and acts with respect and dignity. You have done an incredible job of being leaders to this younger group, but there are still ways in which we must improve. We ask that you take ownership of your role as a leader and demonstrate to the younger grades the behavior that you would want to see from future generations.
Grade eight and nine students, we recognize that you are finding your way in high school and look to older students for guidance. The transition from elementary school to high school is tough, and getting through the first few years can be like walking through a maze in the dark. Through this, we ask you to find your values. Decide to be a Gator, a student who welcomes all. As we try to eliminate harmful words from our vocabulary, there will always be those who choose to be ignorant of the true weight they hold. We ask you to recognize that what those people choose to do is not cool, it's not funny, and it's not acceptable. We know that you are all strong, independent, and smart individuals. Own your values and make the choice to stand for what is right. You are the future of W G S S, and you all deserve the right to learn what makes Walnut Grove such a special school, so that you can be role models for our next generation of Gators.
Please, join us in celebrating who we are as Gators this week and every week after, strong, caring, and welcoming. Going forward, we hope that all students will make a genuine effort to appreciate the diversity within our school and to treat all others with respect and kindness. Thank you for your time.
As aforementioned, this movement was instigated back in December at the Human Dignity Forum, and since then, we've been spending countless hours revising ideas and creating this call to action. However, we can only go so far without your guys' support. Therefore, we would like to ask if there are, is any feedback at all, or questions you guys would like to pose?
Well, firstly, that was very impressive. Thank you for coming to share that with us. It was, it was just so well-written, really inspirational. So with that, I will open it up to fellow trustees. All right, I have trustee Wilson, trustee Perot, and then trustee Todd.
Okay, there we go. I knew enough times, so you just keep pushing it. Come on. Great job. You guys are unbelievable. I saw most of you at the Human Dignity Forum and was so impressed with the way you collaborated and came up with this, and I'm glad to see you've carried that on at your own school. I just want to know, what do you think that the adults around you and in your school and us here at the board, what can we do as part of your call to action? What would you give us as our call to action, if you, if you could? What do you need to see from us to help you?
We see that in many cases, kind of in our hallways and such, that this language has become so common, sometimes it will slip by without people of authority or adults really actually addressing it. Or in some cases, it's, there's almost a fear to addressing it from students and teachers alike, because often it becomes a joke, or it's easy to be teased about when addressing these issues. But I just think it's kind of, when something like this is seen, it's important to act about it and address it, even if you think it won't be taken seriously, because it still sparks that conversation, and that conversation will cause movement in their behavior and their attitude, and kind of forces them to reflect on, oh, is this joke I made really funny, or is what I'm doing really appropriate?
I feel like another piece is also education, because a lot of these kids, like saying these, like students saying these kind of words, they don't know where they come from and what they mean. And so, sure, they're using a joking way, but they don't know the impact. And so I think it's really important that we incorporate education into the schools so that students can learn about what they actually mean.
And also, if there's any students, teachers notice are maybe feeling a little distant from their classmates based on a difference they may have, maybe just being there and offering that student some opportunities to feel more included.
Thank you. Trustee Todd, then trustee, oh, sorry, trustee Perot, then trustee Todd.
Thank you guys so much for your heart, your passion, and your giftedness to follow through with the voices inside of you. It's really profound to see your generation rising up and using your voice. It gives hope for a vision and a future for all of us. I had the privilege of being at the Human Dignity Forum, as well as at the Inclusive Education Committee, to hear the beginning of this heartbeat that you guys are carrying. Trustee Wilson really preempted my question regarding what else can we do. I love that you guys had an opportunity to go to Deepak and to get in front of families, in front of parents, because we need to teach this at home. We need to teach this in the classroom. And you're right, education is the key. It's about that communication piece, and so much of it is about our attitude, plus our behavior equals our character, right? And that's where you, as young people, become those people who are evoking change. And so those of us who are hidden, hidden individuals, and I'll use myself an example, an individual who identifies on the autism spectrum, we don't know when those comments hit our hearts and our minds and our emotions, and how that plays out. And you, as each individual walking down the hallway, walking courage and integrity is very profound, and it takes an incredible amount of resilience. And so I want to encourage you guys to continue linking arms, linking voices, encouraging one another, and pushing out our partner groups such as Deepak, to get before our parents and our parent community, because what goes on in the hallways of the schools is important, but it's equally important what goes on in front of our families. And I thank you for your courage and your energy that you pour out, and that's really what I wanted to say to you.
Thank you, trustee Perot. Trustee Todd.
This is exactly what we were hoping for when we talked about Diversity and Respect Week. Thank you, first and foremost, for your call to action. I think it's a call to action that's heard loud and clear by adults. I wish you nothing but success as you take it forward in the assembly tomorrow, or on Friday. This is exactly what leadership is all about. The students will lead us with their wisdom. And I, you know, we talk about inspiring all learners. You've inspired us today to reach for our full potential. I know when it comes to these words, I have heartfelt conversations with my daughter all the time about this. And I said, "Yeah, rap music has, the N-word has become endemic in rap music." And she goes, "Well, yeah, Dad." And I go, "It, it just, just hearing the word hurts me. It, it, it grates with me, just that word." And she goes, "Yeah, but they're, they're allowed." And I go, "But it, it just, it wrecks me every time I hear it." So I'm glad that you've raised our awareness, and you're letting us know that you need a little help. And certainly, you know, it's a call to action for the adults in the building to say, "No, it's not cool. It's not okay. Those slurs shouldn't be happening anywhere, even if it's meant as a joke." So, once again, the students, the consciousness of students will lead us. And thank you for taking this on. Thank you for reworking it. You asked for feedback about that. I think it's genuine. I think it's authentic. And as I said before, I, I hope for nothing but success as you take this call to action to your colleagues in your high school. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Todd. I have vice chair Coburn, and then trustee Ross.
It's never easy to come and do something like this. It's never easy to perform. It's never easy to public speak. It's never easy to run in elections and do all candidates' meetings, but I think you guys would do really well. So you're already starting a life of public speaking and advocacy, which is fantastic. So trustee Perot kind of touched on it a little, and it's along the theme of parents and older people, and also courage. So you've identified that, you know, certain things are allowed to slide, and teachers and educators and all these people are just kind of backing off. And we're kind of coming into a time where you can't really say what you want too much. So I think there's a bit of a fear of speaking your mind. So often, this is most difficult with our parents and our family members. And I remember during the Oka standoff, which, I was very, very young, for those in the audience, but I do remember, and I remember my grandfather saying something that was really inappropriate and broke my heart. And often, the excuse for these people is, "Oh, well, it was different then," or "It's a different time." But I don't think so. I think there was good people in all times of history. So my question for you is, when you are faced with an adult or a parent who's saying something that hurts your heart, what is your advice and your recommendation to other people who want to stand up to that person in a way that doesn't set them off? And then they shut you down, and then it ends with somebody saying, "Okay, boomer." So.
And all that is very prevalent, so that'll be passed down on their children and kind of carry on, and it can become extremely, like, it can become awful and just a cycle. But I think the best way to approach that is, a lot of times, it seems when discussing with sort of people with different opinions, the approach is taken of both people saying, "You are wrong and I am right." And I, the, it leads to the impossible scenario of two walls yelling at each other, where neither is going to gain anything from that conversation. And I think it's vital to go into it with an open mindset. And even if one person is arguing for something so, like, factual and correct, and the other person is saying something completely absurd, even through that discussion, you'll learn, you'll grow, and you'll further cement, like, yes, I believe this, and I understand why I believe this more than ever now, when, therefore, when you're met with an actual scenario and are discussing with someone to not, it's not necessarily just changing their mind, but it's finding that middle ground, not necessarily either becoming worse people, but just understanding each other in a way. And it better prepares you for that.
Yeah, and like, building on that, nobody likes to think of their opinion as being wrong. If you tell someone their opinion is wrong, they're immediately going to shut down, there's not really an in for a conversation. And so touching on what Maya said earlier about what adults can do to help is educating. And it's not just educating the younger generations, it's educating everyone, because, like, as teachers have told every single student standing up here now, change starts with young people, but then from young people, it spreads. And so from, like, us talking about it up here, and then you maybe having conversations in your own lives with people that you're close to, recognizing, like, societal influences that these people might have had in their life, and then recognizing, this is their lens, this is my lens, how can I show them in a kind, calm manner, like, how their words are having a different impact than they might intend? And just showing, like, the true magnitude of what they're saying.
Also branching out from that, I'd just like to say that empowerment does start, it does start with youth empowerment, but it really, it really continues with the adult supporting. So there's always going to be adults that are ignorant to the, some derogatory ways of their past, and how they might have thought it was okay in their time, but the support that we have from you all tonight, that proves that we can spread it to the adults.
Understand the benefit of dialogue versus debate. Well done.
Okay, thank you, trustee Ross.
Thank you. Fabulous. Ms. Bateman, I know your dad. You've done a good job on him, so keep up the good work. My comment is about the adults in the building. So you're asking all the students to make an agreement, or sign this or a declaration. Are any of the teachers signing a declaration that they're going to, to confront or respond, and not just going to tolerate these things?
Yeah, so right after, when we were first coming up with the actual script for the call to action, we, a few of us went to the staff meeting and spoke in front of a hundred staff there, and we had a little bit of a different call to action for them than the one we read you now. It was more asking them to take on that role of holding students accountable, holding themselves accountable, but also, like, we kind of want inclusive sex ed, and we kind of want teachers to ask for pronouns, and these are all things that we think are steps they should take from now on.
Coming at it with an open mind is definitely the best.
If I could just clarify a couple things, they're not standing in front of two thousand people. There's about sixty of them that are going to filter into the classrooms all at the same time, so that the message is heard in a very powerful, but in a smaller forum, so they can ask those questions. The second thing is, yes, they did present to the staff, and the staff are working very hard at our own inclusive goal that we're working on, and that's not only inclusivity with respect to language, but how we include our students in everything we do in the building. I want to thank a lot of our partner groups, too. Tanya Kerr is here. She's one of the members of the Human Dignity Coalition, and for any of the other partner groups, if you are interested, we have, of course, members of our trustees, of our city council, because this whole idea of inclusivity is what's some, is something that's passionate to almost everyone, we would hope, for a healthy, healthy community. So our thanks to these amazing students. Some of their parents are over here on the side as well, and we're, we're very excited about their work. I should say that there were a couple of primary writers that I want to recognize today who were involved in the message. And of course, I had it right here, and I lost it. I'll make sure that I say it all correctly, though. The primary writers were Maya, if you'll put your hand up, Indy, Julie, and Eli, and a lot of the supporting and editing, Justine, Jaden, she's here, Anna, Chloe Kim, Zach, and Sammy. So all have a passion, an ongoing passion for inclusivity, and we're very proud of the work that they've done. So all have a passion and ongoing passion for inclusivity and we're very proud of the work that they've done.
Thank you so much. And thank you for all of your dedication to this program and bringing so many people together and watching this grow over the years into the incredible machine that it is now. You're making such a measurable difference in, in our district and beyond. And I just want to thank you for the passion that you show every day and, and how you're so committed to bettering the lives of so many people. And it really is just fantastic to watch. And I can't wait to hear how this continues to grow. So thank you for coming out and sharing this information with us and educating us. And we wish you every success with your presentations. You're very courageous and I know you're going to do a fantastic job. So thank you. Have a good night. Let everybody see that light. All right, so as our lovely guests feed out tonight, we are going to be moving on to item eight, which is the superintendent's report, which is the District Technology Plan Superintendent. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair Dykman. And yes, you can see how powerful a technology plan presentation is. People are still flooding in. And we've got the entire tech department of Langley School District working avidly on it right now. If I can ask Dawn Tomlinson, Director of Instruction, to come forward, please. And I think Richard Skander, who's Director of IT, will be joining her. This document that they're going to run you through some highlights tonight, I really have to commend the two of them and many others that have been involved in this because this is, was a massive undertaking. And technology, one of the frustrations around, I think this has been that, is it just about engagement? Is it just about keeping kids busy? Or is it something that can really meaningfully make an impact on learning? And that's where we want to get to. And you're going to hear that vision tonight in terms of if we're hitting it well, what does it look like? We've got some great samples of that, uh, which is fantastic. The other part to this is, you know, what do you provide for tools? What do those look like? And boy, when you embark on that trail, let me tell you, you find out there's some very unhappy people out there. Because you can't please everybody, no matter what device you choose. And we continue to try to do what we can to make sure staff are in a good place there and our kids. But we also have to make sure it's financially sustainable. And that's another complexity because this is changing at a rapid pace and it can be very expensive for a district of, you know, 22,000 to 23,000 students, 2,500 staff in terms of trying to kind of make sure we keep things in a good place there. And then there's all the infrastructure behind making sure that, yeah, you have the tools, but can you make them work? Such as we see tonight, a whole team trying to make sure that this is in a, in a good place. And I'm sure it will be. The boss is watching. So that being said, uh, you know what? You're going to get some great highlights tonight, a good opportunity to share with you, but also to ask some questions. We're excited the direction we're going. We've got lots of work to do and we've had lots of lessons we've learned. But the, the future is looking very promising and I'll turn it over to the two of you.
There we go. Okay, um, so I'm going to start off. Uh, I'm going to represent more of the learning part of the tech plan, so I'm going to talk about that. And then I'm going to hand it over to Richard to talk a little bit about the infrastructure that we need to have in place to realize the vision of it. So, um, the plan, you have the board report and it goes to adapt. I'm going to really go over the, I'm just going to highlight the kind of key components of the plan tonight. So just outlining the vision, the, the goals and the strategies to utilize digital learning tools in all areas of the curriculum, to engage students in relevant and meaningful learning experiences, to connect them to resources and collaborative tools. And then ultimately to prepare them for this rapidly changing world, to have a successful transition into it. So, here we go. Uh, so one of the things that we know is that we are working in a, in a time where we're actually trying to teach a generation of digital learners. They have never been without technology. Um, and yet, um, one of the significant challenges for us is actually to utilize technology in really purposeful ways, productive ways, and certainly responsible ways. And I think you're going to see that that's the theme throughout the tech plan. As we really started to dig into what do we need the learning to look like in order for those students to be successful with using technology in purposeful ways. So, um, these are some of the guiding documents that we used when we started down this process. We, we have a vision group. We have a number of administrators that sit on that group with us. And lots of different lenses in that group, different levels, elementary, middle, secondary. From the technology side, people with lots of technology, people with lots of more, I would say, kind of focused on pedagogy. Just really trying to come together, take a look at some of these guiding documents and, and come to a consensus about what should it look like in Langley. We use the eight elements of change that we use in our school action plans to put this together. This was something that we embarked on as a district a few years ago. Um, and so for that consistency, we thought it would make sense to use the eight elements of change to start to formulate the plan. The vision is the vision. It is our district vision. And so we use that more as a lens to look through as we started to develop the plan. But one of the things that was really important, uh, words, you know, we heard this from the students today, words really mean a lot. Uh, and so one of the things that we really wrestled with was what is our mission? What does that look like? Because every word in this sentence is really, really important and we wrestled with a lot. Because there are three words there in particular, support, enhance, and transform. Those are three really important words because once we got that those words were important to the tech plan, we had to think about, okay, how are we going to paint a picture of those words? So people understand what does that look like and what does it not look like? So really important and took many, many hours to come up with that mission statement. We also wanted to make sure, I'm sorry, uh, just before I go on to that. So, um, this is the start of the technology mission and vision. And so you can see there are many parts to this and this is not even all of the parts. But we started to look at what are the things that we need to consider? And certainly looking through the eight elements. We don't have all eight elements up there right now, but I am going to speak to many of them this evening. The team that, uh, the teams that we have been working with, um, there's a list of them there. Um, I want to point out two in particular. I already talked about the tech vision working group, which is the group of admin that we've been working with in, in order to create the plan. But I'd also like to really highlight the district vision, um, spring forum participants. So there were a number of teachers, QP staff, um, admin, uh, teacher librarians, all kinds of different people from the district that came together twice in the spring to give feedback on what they wanted to see in a tech plan. And that information was used extensively as we started to develop the plan. And we kept revisiting that information to make sure that we were honoring the voices of the people in that room and honoring the skills and the knowledge of the people that were in that room. We also wanted to make sure that what the tech plan was really situated in learning. It's not about stuff. And that is really important. Yes, we need stuff to be able to do it, but that shouldn't be the driver. And so we looked at these three documents, three, these three documents really stood out for us in terms of our learning. Certainly our core competencies, our educated citizen document, which is really portraying the skills and attributes that we want of our graduates when they successfully transition from secondary school. Uh, and then certainly the curricular, the new curriculum and the model of the know, do, understand. And certainly the technology would really bring forth the do part of the learning. When we started looking at the core competencies, it became really evident to us quickly that they're very aligned with the ISTI standards. The ISTI standards outline what the skills and competencies are that students should have in order to successfully trans- uh, transition into this rapidly changing world. So in terms of the techno, using technology. And the core competencies actually completely aligned with that. So we started flushing that out. And actually for every area of core competencies, we lined it up with the ISTI standards. And this is going to be one of our anchor documents as we move forward to develop the learning plan for all students in the Langley School District. So really important document, I'm not going to show you the whole thing. I believe we showed all of it within the board report, but I wanted to really give some context for how we came up with this. What we're really aiming for, um, we, again, looking at our generation of, of digital learners. And again, speaking of the challenges of not necessarily responsible digital citizens and not necessarily using technology in really positive purposes. So really want to start with laying down a foundation of, of creating digital citizens in our district and moving them ultimately towards being digital leaders. Uh, and really starting to use technology in ways that really make a difference in people around, in the lives of people around them. Obviously, the curricular competencies are really important in this. And I'm right at the very beginning, I said that, that the importance of you being able to utilize technology to support, enhance, and transform learning in all of the curricular areas. And that doesn't necessarily mean using technology all the time. It means being able to use technology when you need to use technology. And I think that that's the, that's the part that's really important in that. So I wanted to again, go back to those three words, support, enhance, and transform. And sometimes people have difficulty with understanding how does it transform learning? I think we all have a pretty good idea of what does it look like to support? Uh, and probably you could take it up another level and kind of think, okay, enhance. But transform is really, um, uh, it, it doesn't mean that we're going to get to transform with everything we do with technology and, and with every teacher in the district. But I've recently witnessed some work done, um, teachers doing some work in our district, working collaboratively together. And actually, we have one of the teachers here, Marion Balzerini, um, who have been working collaboratively, collaboratively with some of our staff. So one of our digital instructional coaches and our ADST coordinator, Sandra Avril. And they've been collaborating between three schools, so Brookswood, Noel Booth, and Belmont. The teachers got together and created this whole project that lasts months. It just keeps going on and on and on, really engaging activities for kids. And what it really highlights for me is that it's not about technology. We're not going in and it's like, technology is not a subject. So we're not going in and saying, okay, we're going to teach you how to use the iPads now. It's more about creating an authentic, meaningful learning experience that, that students have to really dig deep and teachers have to dig deep. Because what I've noticed is it hasn't just transformed the learning experience, it's transforming teachers. And I'm seeing, and I'm sorry, I might get a little, I might, emotional. But I just, I just had some conversations with Sandra today and, and just responses of teachers that it's really revitalized. They're teaching and they're really excited to go to school every day and do these because their kids are so engaged and learning so many awesome skills. So I'm going to show you a little video that kind of gives a little bit of more information about what does this look like when you're transforming learning?
This is all wrong. I shouldn't be up here. I should be back in school on the other side of the ocean. Yet you all come to us, young people, for hope. How dare you? You have
Yep, okay.
This is all wrong. I shouldn't be up here. I should be back in school on the other side of the ocean. Yet you all come to us, young people, for hope. How dare you? You have stolen my dreams and my childhood with your empty words. And yet I'm one of the lucky ones. People are suffering. People are dying. Entire ecosystems are collapsing. We are in the beginning of a mass extinction and all you can talk, the world is waking up. And change is coming whether you like it or not. Thank you.
Hey, students, I'm Hallie, a member of the youth movement of climate activism. This is my partner, Rachel.
Hello, we are very excited to be sending you this message. We frequently research student projects that support our initiative to raise awareness about climate change.
While we were surfing the internet over the weekend, we saw some postings on your school district website.
It looks like you've been doing a lot of research on the regions of our beautiful province.
Your findings are very interesting and we would love it if you could come present them at our upcoming youth conference.
We are sending you an official invitation to attend the conference later this month. All the details are included in the invitation. Do you have the envelope?
I do, it's right here.
Please look at the information in RSVP as soon as possible.
All arrangements have been made for your travel and accommodations.
All right. I'm not going to repeat myself, so I hope that you are listening intently. Every single thing that you do based on first aid, make sure you record it for liability purposes.
You are going to stay with your rowmates. And as you come forward, Captain Balzerini is going to hand you some objects that you can use so that you can assist the injured passengers.
Hi, there's a person. We're going to clean up around the wound.
Is anything else hurting or anything damage?
No, you, we're going to clean up the blood here.
All right, I'm going to call 911, hold on.
We're going to stay here. I'm not going to pull it out, okay? Because if we pull it out, then um, she, when she landed, the glass impaled the front of her forehead.
Breaking news, Belmont students caught in a forced landing, now trying to survive with extreme
Using whatever they had brought in their backpacks, limited supplies which were onboard the downed plane, and the nature around them, students constructed shelters that held all members of their group. Students then took the measurements of their shelters and scaled them down in order to create replica models. These shelters were then tested against the elements, rain, snow, and wind. After seeing how they fared, students then had the opportunity to revise and redesign their structures using more natural material in order to create the most weather resistant structure.
Hey, you see how the wind is actually affecting it?
Rainstorm.
We're actually doing pretty good.
Students receive word that there is a supply drop happening on Tuesday, February 25th. They will need to leave their shelters and move to where there have been numerous supplies dropped in order to help them survive a few more days until rescue crews can get into the area to pick them up. Using outdoor skills such as orienteering, landmarking, and waypoint finding, students will search for supplies in groups with kids from different classes in different schools. This will allow students the opportunity to work with those who they will be attending BSS with within the next year or two. On March 12th, students will finally be rescued and attend the youth conference which they had originally been invited to. Here they will share their research findings and together find ways to combat climate change close to home.
So the thing that you'll notice is you don't see technology throughout there, but there is, there's more to technology than iPads and laptops. They had water testing units that they used. So it's what we, we have changed the terminology in the tech plan to say digital learning tools or digital tools. Because it really isn't just about iPads and laptops. So, um, they pretty much covered every curricular area possible and have been for the last number of months. And I can tell you that those students are highly engaged and the teachers are highly engaged and have a whole new way of bringing learn into the classroom. So it's pretty exciting work. We can't do this, the tech plan, we can't infuse technology in classes without the professional learning. And one of the things that we really recognized early on when we started to meet and talk about the tech plan is the need for the support, that we, that we really need to upart the support that we are giving to teachers. So these are, on this slide, I'm not going to go through each one of them. Some of them are already being done, some we need to do more intentionally. And some are ideas about possibilities for the future, things like champions in schools and working with them. We also need to access some of our external resources more. We certainly are accessing Apple more this year. Apple has been working with all our teacher librarians, doing some really intentional learning. Apple has been working with all our teacher librarians, doing some really intentional learning with devices with them. And they've been working also with our IS staff on how to use technology to support numeracy. So those have been, and they did a big conference on February 14th for Odyssey. So those are the kinds of things that we need to access more. We're also talking about the possibility of a summer academy for champions in schools. And then possibly some work with them throughout the year. And we're continuing to work with our district teachers in order to make sure that they are embedding in their workshops and that they're pointing out some of the tools that can be used to support learning. In the plan, you will also notice that there are key goals and strategies. There are six goals and within those goals, there are a number of strategies. This is still in draft format, we're still adding to that. We're going to be looking for feedback, which is one of the next steps as we go to some of our partner groups and start to share what we have so far with our tech plan is just to be looking for, are there things that we have missed or we haven't thought through really carefully? These are some of the structures that we are either continuing to work with or considering. I want to highlight a couple of them. The student devices, iPad piece, we had rolled out wave one and wave two. We recognized that there needs to be some more support at one and two, but we're also rethinking how we do that wave three. What might that look like? Because we don't want these devices sitting on shelves and not being used. So we have to make sure that whatever we're putting out in schools, that we can really support. The other one that I really wanted to highlight was the e-portfolios K to 12. As we're starting to shift how we're communicating student learning and how we're trying to shift students in terms of owning their own learning, we're really moving towards using e-portfolios. And that's another piece that's going to come in to play as we start to flesh out the tech plan and the learning that goes along with it. This is a little bit of the roadmap, but you'll notice that there's no timeline on any of these items. So these are some of the items that we are looking to implement. Note that bring your own device, one, so Richard and his team have been working on the infrastructure to allow that to happen. And we also need to look at what the parameters will be around that. But we are looking at piloting that. Brookswood is already doing a little bit of a one to one, so we're going to start to, we're going to continue that and intensify that. Walnut Grove is going to be on a pilot and then Uconnect, we're going to be working with them. But with the idea that we're going to learn from them about what might that look like and what do we need to put in place to make sure that everyone's successful with that, who wants to move to that? The other piece with the teacher devices is that we really need to look at a plan that's sustainable and it's predictable so that we know what we're using, you know, at least a few years down the road. And how does that support the tech plan and how does that support the learning that's happening in classrooms? We have to consider measurement, these are just ideas right now about what are the things, we need to have some benchmarks. We really want to be able to determine whether this is actually making an impact on student learning. And some of that, some of the measurement will be quantitative, but others will actually be qualitative. When I consider, I know Mary Ann's left now, but when I consider seeing the text that I saw from her today about how it's changed the way that she is going to teach in the future, I said, that to me, that's qualitative data. That's telling me that people want, you know, once they have the support, that they can take this and they can transform learning experiences. Financial sustainability is one of the areas of the eight elements of success through the plan. And I think that the thing that we landed on the most was we need to be really agile. We need to determine what our priorities are, but we don't actually know necessarily what our financial situation is going to look like and what we're going to be able to support. And so we have to look at Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D. What are our priorities? What needs to happen first, what needs to happen second, what needs to happen thirdly? And the most important thing is that we need to make sure that we put more into supporting it. Lots of different pieces to this, it's a bit of a, a bit of a monster. And certainly what I have just kind of shared with you is the whole learning piece of it. What might it look like in the classroom? What are the things that are going to need to happen with teachers that are working with students in the classroom in order to make this happen? But there's a whole lot of stuff that happens behind the scenes in terms of the infrastructure. So Richard and his team have been working very hard on making sure that the structure, the infrastructure that they're working on is going to support the things that we want to do in terms of learning. So I'm going to turn it over to him to share a little bit about the infrastructure.
Hi, I'm Richard Iskander, Director of IT. I hope you enjoyed all the graphic and the charts here, because now we're moving to a really serious topic. So I want to, everybody talked about the technology in the districts and the devices, but people don't realize what's involved in the infrastructure part of it. And in the business part of it, as well as, you know, working with the educational partners to, you know, get the technology to the kids. So I'm going to take you into a journey that started last year and will be probably continuing in the last two to three years on the infrastructure side. Last year, we had, we realized that to get to where we want to in technology, we needed to make, have stable, dense, reliable network. So we upgraded all our wireless, or the network infrastructure from wireless to wired network in all our secondary schools and middle schools. That was around 400 wireless access points. That entailed a lot of wiring and a lot of cooperation, coordination between us and facilities. And that basically resulted, and we put new technology in these schools, a technology that's going to future proof us for probably in the next 10 years, hopefully more. So in the same time, we took out around 400 access points and this summer, we will be doing the same, we will be doing the same thing in the elementary schools. So we, the idea is there will be a complete coverage of wireless. As soon as you get into the school, we will have no issues about capability to handle all the wireless in our buildings. In the same, another project that we started last summer was a kind of a partnership between us and the township. And that resulted to us using their, the township fiber that they're actually laying underground every time they do an upgrade to one, to their roads. And so what they've done, basically every time they upgraded the road in front of a school, they put a junction box in there. And so we talked, we had some meetings there and so now we're, we have four sites connected to that fiber. The difference between utilizing the NGN of, you know, 20, 30, 40, 100, 500 meg versus utilizing the fiber, the dark fiber, fiber in the district, in the township, is we moved to 10 gig and 40 gig connection down back to here. That will allow for stability for all our wireless, all our phone systems, all our access to the internet. In the same time, we have an understanding with the ministry that every time we pull a school out of PLnet and we hook it up to the district, we are not losing that. So if I, our E-Mountain was one of the schools that we connected right away to the fiber. So we will be having 500 meg that we will be adding to any schools that we deem, we deem needed to. Like so if Walnut Grove will need another 500, we can do that without any extra charges from the ministry. So I'm hoping this summer that we, I will be meeting with the township directors there and we will be looking at what else can we do? All of that's going to take time because it takes quite a bit of funding to do the last mile between the junction box and basically our schools. Now, last year, we started centralizing the help desk. And this is, was done to basically provide the best service for our schools. We wanted our schools to have the best technicians that is, to respond to the tickets that is being logged. So in the old days, a technician basically will be in the school. He will have an expertise in some areas, but if there is any issues over that, they struggled. Now, a ticket will come into our help desk office, basically, and it will be rated based on categories that we've already defined. And what will happen is a technician that is specialized in that area will be sent to the school. And we're each, we're not saying a complete, you know, ticket to technicians. We still have zones and so that way, we still have the kind of connection between our technicians and our schools. At the same time, we're using our help desk as an inventory asset management. So we had a major asset inventory program, project that went to every school, every closet, every, anywhere in the class, in our school that we have or we hid or we, we forgot some technology and we had them all in, logged into our system. That way, we have a complete view to what we have for technology in our school. And we can start creating a roadmap for a refresh cycle for the state, for the technology. That was a really, it will give us clearance to what is the cost needed to keep the technology up and the refresh cycle of that technology. Another project we started, it was, you know, it was in the schools in the district, but we kind of took it on in a big way, which is centralizing device management. You can see that I said it's in the process. We are, we do have a centralized device management now, but we have two of them. And because of the reason that we have two of them, because at the time, the district decided to have technology to send, to manage these devices, the industry was not mature enough for laptops and iPads. So we have now two of them. And that created a little bit of a nightmare for us to maintain. So this summer, or this actually spring, starting April, we will be migrating from one to the other. And I think we're going to do, have some saving in the process. Evergreen, I call it evergreen, which is a refresh cycle. And for me, this is kind of the plumbing of the district and the devices that we have. Every device have a life cycle. Every switch have a life cycle, is that every phone system have a life cycle. So because we've done all the inventory last year, this is going to allow us to have the number of devices, the kind of devices, the age of the devices that we have. And when I talk devices, I talk about phone systems. I talk about wireless, about switches, about servers, storage. Sorry, it's boring stuff, but that's, that stuff costs money. And so we, we need to have a grip on that. You know, without this, you, you know, Brian will have years where he won't spend any money, but then one year I will come to him and I will ask him for a million dollar because suddenly something happened and there is an end of life of certain technology. This way, we have a roadmap that will allow us year after year, kind of approve format or predict the cost of every technology renewal. Now, IT is not just, you know, devices and wiring. IT is, because we're everywhere, we understand processes. We are using the software to, in the business environment and in the school. IT has a lot to do now with improving the business flows, digitizing, making sure that we actually comply with FOIPALAS. So we have a three-pronged approach to basically, this is now starting, we start taking that on. One is basically internal SBO business processes and workflow. The second is district communication with schools and parents. I told you it's boring stuff, but really important. And internal schools and, internal schools communication. So when I say improving the business flow, basically, we use PowerSchool as an ERP, Enterprise Resource Planning. And basically, this is a system where when we hire somebody, we put them in the system. We give them a location, we give them a position, we put them in a category and we basically decide how much they make and all of that stuff. So this system is comprehensive. But as a district, we have been adding bit by bit a module to kind of automate it, but we're not there. And IT is going to be taking a lion's share of that, leading this project to make sure, make sure that we have the efficiencies, we have the accuracy. Because as soon as you start doing manual processes, we're prone, we're prone to mistakes. We're prone to issues that we've never anticipated. Human beings, you know, are unpredictable. So where we want to be is basically, we hire somebody, the system will basically get them all into where they need to be. And when we, when they leave us or they retire, all of that, basically the same thing happens. One click from HR will produce a series of steps that will be taken, automated and, you know, will save, will save us a lot of mistakes. At the same time, you know, that will create, will give the, you know, a better broadcasting tools, a better financial forecasting tools to get us to know where we are, we are at with our employees, with our wages and all of that stuff. So that's, will be, you know, coming up, will come in very soon, this year and the next, in the coming year too. District communication with schools and parents. This area, I don't know if you guys know, I came from Maple Ridge a year ago, a year and a half ago. It seems like forever now. We, while I was there, we've created something that speaks to this and I will be looking into creating similar things and maybe create it or buying off the shelf. We don't, we haven't looked into it, you know, in a precise matter, but online registration need to be online, we need to be done automatically online. All the, all the trips for like, yeah, school trips, all the registration fees, all of this need to be online. And the parents, the feedback that I've had before about, from parents was like, what took you so long? Because like old days when we used to, the parents used to line up in front of schools, waiting for specialty programs are gone. Literally the thing opens up and we, you know, parents will basically register. And we've allowed for people who do not have technology. So we've had partnerships with libraries, we have labs in our schools in various locations that actually ready for, for, basically ready for parents to walk in and say, I don't have a computer, can I use your computers? So that's another area we should be, we'll be looking for. The other things that this has gave us is the consent forms. There's trips that have high risks and we cannot send our kids without the consents of the parents. And now it's been done manually. We need to make sure that it's been done automatically, online. And there is no way you can move to the second step without consenting to these, to the risk. and there is no way you can move to the step, second step without consenting to these, to the to the risk. No, the for so for the parents to understand and consent to the risks of these trips. So a ski trip might create certain risks, and the parents need to know that and need to consent to it. Internal school communication. Teams is the product that we're using in Office 365. This is a collaboration tool, so I'm not sure if you guys have looked at it, but it is our phone system too at the same time. We will be deploying this one, hopefully, starting next year. We will be piloting some projects within the school now to make sure that we get the feedback from the schools. Teams is going to be the communication between districts and schools, schools and staff, staff and and kids. So that's on the way, and it's cutting edge. It's actually, it will basically create a place where there is collaboration and sharing. We it will, there is a a place in Teams where the teachers will be able to come based on numeracy literacy in various categories, K to five, five to eight, eight to twelve, and be able to share links, school, school plan, I mean, class or lesson or whatever discussion they need to talk to have. So this kind of create a place where they can converge. Finally, policies and FOIPA compliance. Fortunately, I I fell into the kind of compliance place with the FOIPA. Our school, without complying to FOIPA, we are at risk of breaking the law. FOIPA is the bridge Columbia law. We've had, we have to work hard to assess the impact on every software that we deploy in the school district. There is a process called privacy impact assessment, not as an easy task. You look at the software where the data is moving from the district, and you assess the impact, and that will tell you if you should move forward with the system, with the software deployment or not. So that's what we're taking on. Consent forms in the school districts, we basically, we had last year kind of cleaned up some of the consents, and we will be looking more into streamlining the consents within the schools and the district. Our staff, existing staff and new staff now have been taken, well, have taken the FOIPA training, and that generated awareness in our school. So they, so that's, that's a positive things, because our kids' data is really important to us, and the last things we need that to be breached and to be somewhere, we don't want it. At the same time, social media guidelines and procedures, we are working and looking at creating something like this in our schools to protect our kids and protect our teachers and staff to basically understand what's the implications. Because sometimes, there there is implication that people do not think about. And so as a district, we need to create these guidelines for them. And so another place is centralizing services and devices. And this is, we, as a district, have taken on Office 365 as the make main, our our main cloud software. We've, we have created the privacy impact assessment for Office 365. The ministry has allowed, has green lighted with the with the commissioner of, the privacy commissioner has green green lighted that for us. So this is what we will be supporting. And at the same time, it's a suite of, you know, applications. So therefore, Teams is part of that, and it will be a communication hub for us. And that's kind of all I wanna present to you.
Thank you. So I do have a speaker's list. The order of the speaker's list that I have right now is Vice Chair Coburn, Trustee Pro, Trustee Todd, Trustee Ross, Trustee Wilson, and then Trustee Ward. All right, so that would be everybody. So we're gonna start with Vice Chair Coburn.
Okay, well, the first thing I'm gonna say is, Richard, you're really lucky, because I had a question coming your way, but Gord preempted, strike it, and it was in the presentation. So the question then is for Dawn, sorry. I'm sure. So it's actually a lot, this easy one. And the slide on the bring your own device, my first question is, is that for educators? Eight through twelve, are we talking about kids?
No, we're talking about students.
Right, so I'm sure you can see where I'm headed with this. There's a huge differential in access and quality and, and it's not like we could have five extra and the kids who don't have one, like, it will be vast and it will be huge. And I did a lot of work on this in my masters, and it's actually a huge gap, and it's a huge concern for me. And I know you would be concerned as well. So I'm hoping that you have somewhat of an answer on how you're gonna attack that. Thanks.
Ensuring that that support for anyone who doesn't have a device is invisible.
Thank you, does that answer questions? Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. All right, Trustee Pro.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions. Unfortunately, fortunately, one's partly for Dawn, the other is for Richard. So Dawn, I'm dovetailing off of actually Trustee Coburn's question. We are looking at the e-portfolios, which will demand access to technology. And again, I I'm gonna echo Trustee Coburn's thought process regarding the disparity that's occurring. Having been a parent who attended, had children attending Uconnect, I see the beauty in the portfolio process. I I embrace it fully, I support it, it's it's, it's a profound experience for everybody, especially our students. Do we have a Plan B for students who do not for that soft entry to ensure that they they can produce their academics and their learnings in a way that they can be proud of, because that the whole piece surrounding technology really does denote privilege? And without that, then what happens subversively, if that's even a word? Shame. And I want to, you know, in terms of my heart, who I am as a human, always want to ensure our kids are moving away from places of trauma and these situations, and and that piece becomes a big part, especially when they're coming from homes that can't can't access that stuff easy, even if it means to what Richard Stockwell, going to a library or the school, or single-parent families, or families who are coming in from through immigration, whatnot, that access to be able to leave home, once they get home, also becomes restricted. So I I just want to really be rest assured that we're cognizant of that and and mindfully navigating that. So I'll I'll leave that one, and I hear part of that, and I'm gonna throw the other one out. This way I can shut down, and then you guys can respond. Perhaps, maybe, this is for Superintendent Stewart, I'm not sure. So that it's a kind of a dovetail thing, this help desk ticket and the signing of the forms. Where is our, where is our storage being held? Is it on Canadian soil? Awesome, okay, so, because our kids' information's on there.
There is nobody who cares more about where our data is than what, than, well.
Than Richard.
Well, and to me, this is, that's the non-negotiable thing for me, that our kids' data and information and privacy is paramount.
Okay, so then when the consent forms are coming in, that's being stored online, and then put copies into the students' files then, right? Awesome, okay.
For now, yes, but I wanna move toward online, and they will be secured online on Canadian soil. So they will be online, and that will be a safer place, safer than printing them and storing them.
Thank you, Trustee Pro. So it sounds like your second question has been answered, but the first question, you're still waiting for an answer on. So I will hand that back over to you.
So there are different ways of doing that, and certainly, one of the pieces that was up there was having devices in a learning commons that students can sign out and utilize. That's one of the pieces that we wanna get to, so that we have enough, so that students can, again, have ready access to those devices anytime they need to. The other thing is, is that the portfolio tool that we're using right now, that we plan on using in the future, is My Blueprint, and My Blueprint can be used on the phone as well. So there's lots of different options for it being used, but I just go back again to us being really thoughtful about what does that look like, so that it remains invisible and it doesn't become a shaming thing.
Thank you. So I have Trustee Todd.
I gotta double-click.
Have to clear the podium first.
Thank you. So what I really appreciate in your talk is, you're talking about taking digital citizen and then moving to digital leadership, and that in itself is transformative. And and I like the way, it's almost like Maslow's hierarchy, that self-actualization when it comes to the digital world. And you're right, it's tremendously exciting. Some parents and adults sometimes can be a little bit spooked by that. And somebody once compared, you know, getting a number of students on on the the worldwide web, or antiquated term, compared it to like jumping from ice floe to ice floe and hoping nothing bad happens. A question, and this is what I've found in personal experience, but, and it's kind of ironic, I'm talking about a tech plan, but oftentimes, it's the humans in the system that are the most critical point. And any role of a tech plan in a school district really relies upon one really, really excited advocate at the school level. So, and I know you you highlighted, you know, and it's been called different things over different times, the digital learning facilitator. How how can we really be deliberate and support those people? Because without a lot of praise, acknowledgement and all that, they have a lifespan of two to three years.
Yeah, and you and you were right, it is those advocates that are really going to move us forward. I loved, I was listening to Coquitlam District talk about their tech plan recently, and one of the things that they did was they looked at champions in schools and pulling them out and working with them. But then the next step was they brought in someone that maybe was a little bit more reluctant around using, not as comfortable around using technology. So that was their goal, was to bring someone that's in that position, because I think actually there's even more power in that. Because we all know Sally can do it, because Sally, she does everything, right? And she'll just try it. But but, you know, John over here is is not comfortable with it, and when he starts to get excited about it, I think that that's much more powerful. So we're working on fleshing out a plan, and one of the things that we're doing next week is getting some input from our administrators in our schools about where are you with technology in your building? What is working, what's not working, and what might work for you through some of these ideas? And what do you think is going to draw people to be part of that? We wanted to look at a fairly significant amount of time in working with them, so maybe two or three days in the summer, possibly. And maybe those are the the classes that we're going to be able to outfit with some devices, so that they've got that to get them going. So those pieces are all still up in the air, and we're looking for some feedback on.
The other things I wanna say that we're realizing that there's no cookie cutter approach to every, to every, to the district school. Every school has its own culture, has its own strength and weakness. And so we will be basically connecting with each school to tailor an approach to them.
Okay, thank you. I have Trustee Ross, and then Trustee Wilson, and then Trustee Ward.
So, welcome to the district, Richard. I haven't met you yet, so.
No, I managed a year and a half ago.
Yeah, you're kidding yourself away quite well. So anyway, we're so pleased to to steal you away from me, which, and and I just applaud the good work that you're doing, and it's much of it's thankless, much like the Secretary Treasurer, you don't get a lot of pats on the back. When something goes wrong with the computer, you've got problems, and people are certainly well-versed to tell you what their problems are, and poor old Brian gets the same thing all the time. So, you know, if you need someone to get some encouragement, Brian will help you out, I'm sure, and vice versa.
He's doing a good job on that one.
All right, good. The question I have for you is, you talked, you talked about there's a communication aspect. Oh, by the way, I look really good up there, I kinda like this. I've never seen myself up there. Moving right along. There's a communication piece to this with parents. If there was an emergency, i.e. an earthquake, which is obviously the kind of the worst thing that could possibly happen, would we be able to use this tool to alert parents via telephone, text, via email?
That's interesting, you say, ask that question.
Do you have the, yeah, can he get, put that up?
So.
Gun up people over there. Code five oh four.
So which?
It's Langley Air Media. Sorry, I'm just gonna help the tech guy.
Oh, yeah. I don't have my glasses.
Right there, yeah, Langley Air Media, Air Media. Yeah, and it's. Five zero four zero.
Nope, nothing happened anymore.
I just lost it. Langley, oh geez.
There we go.
There you go, yeah, it just took a bit. Five zero four zero. There you go.
There you go.
So, so we have multiple approaches to communication, and one of them is we're creating this application here, and it's a district application that's tailored to two things. One is to parents and one for staff. As a parent, if I am a Dorothy Peacock, I have a kid in Dorothy Peacock, I can take a look at school calendars of basically for, you know, like the weekly schools. If I have any news, I can pick pick up all the news. I can do the staff list as a parent. But at the same time, do you see that alert in here? These are alerts that we can send as a text to everybody, every parent in that school. And so we are, we are ready to start deploying it. We're gonna start with our staff, and then we're gonna move after that to parents. It is an app already, people can download it and pick up. So if I have more than one kid actually, or or if I have a kid in different school, all I have to do is just, you know, if I do Brookside Elementary, I submit it. And now Brookside is in here. Brookswood, sorry, I need my glasses.
Wasn't prepared for that.
So, so what you, what you're seeing is, you know, this is a lot of help here for each school have their own calendar. So we don't, it's a one-stop shop here. The good things about it, it's tailored too, so that you can send alert with it to staff. You can send alert in a school, you can send alerts to district-wide staff, or you can send alert to everybody who has this. So if there is any emergency, you're getting the alerts that you're seeing here, and we'll be testing them bit by bit. The first, you know, they're gone now, but, you know, on a snow day, we right away, we send it to all the staff. IT were kind of the guinea pigs kind of department, and then after that, we're moving them within, we're looking at SBO, and then we're gonna push it to schools. Now, if you are a staff and you say, sign in here, you get a lot more privileges. And so, simple things that, like staff directory, and again, Brookside. You guys have forty-five schools, so it's hard to have a. You guys have forty-five schools, so it's hard to have a... So this is basically all the staff in this school. Now if, we will be talking to the teachers, and so anybody who have our phone, our phones, we have around two hundred and something phones in the district, they will be here in the contact. But any teachers will have their own personal phone, and we will ask their consent. But as a principal, let's say I want to connect with, with them, I can directly, this is their email address and that, their email, and then the address of the school, which is not an important thing here. I wish I can have somebody with a phone line.
We get it.
Yeah. Anyway, so, so this is kind of tailored for all, so, and you have a lot of stuff in here. If you want, as a, as a staff, if you want to send a help desk ticket, you can do it from here. Book of Us, you can do that from here. Even staff, we have a staff forms for the kind of emergency event list, we can access it from here. And that, the beauty about this one is it's being tailored to our needs. It's a company that I've dealt with before, and they're trying to get into our K-12. They, they've had a lot of success within municipalities, and now they're trying to, to be in this market. So we told them what we need, and they actually tailored this to us. A lot of schools now are looking, I've got a few calls saying, "What is this?" And I'm like reluctant to say anything because we haven't yet deployed it. The, the others, the others, like, I struggled with this. I'm a new employee, and I've been deployed to four or five schools. I'm like a support teacher, school educators. If I want to go to any school, let's say Alice Brown, this is, this is all the phone numbers for the classrooms, they had to the, of the school. But if I want to really go to there, I click on, on there, and then I can get a direction directly straight to there. And I've got lots and lots here. So you guys span from Surrey all the way to Absford. So that would, that's, that's something really helpful for us. Would that answer some of your concern?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. That is, that is wonderful. We have two more speakers on this. I have trustee Wilson and then trustee Ward.
Oh, wow, it just came on first try there. That was great. I had three different questions, but I think they've kind of half been answered. So my first one was about equity regarding which devices will go to which schools, and you've talked about it's not going to be cookie cutter, different schools have different needs. But we also have sometimes a feeling of they have and, and have-not schools. So I think we need to be mindful that, you know, schools are receiving different technologies, even if some of the people in the school might not think that they need the same things. I think it's important for students, when they visit other schools, to say, "Why doesn't my school have these things?" And, you know, to sort of have some system to make sure that we don't have a disparity between them. So that one was kind of answered. Two was the Teams and also this app, where we've talked about using different technology to communicate and that there are apps out there. And I think you mentioned that there's two hundred phones that, that we do have. But what about staff, probably especially support staff, who might not have their own phone? Or who sometimes, which I don't blame them, are resistant to use a personal device for a work engagement? Will they be put at a disadvantage if they don't have that access to that app or the Teams app?
So all our staff have mobile devices, and I'm not talking about phones, I'm talking about laptops, okay?
Not all.
Teachers, so, yeah, so support.
So the support staff, they have devices.
So we're working toward having technology throughout our schools, and we, so that Teams will work on everything, any mobile technology from just on laptops to desktops. And so it's the same argument about, you know, having email, because that is a advantage for somebody who doesn't have the device. Our district is progressively moving toward devices per staff, and if we can, when we afford it, if we can afford it. And if not, we will be moving toward second-hand devices toward the categories of people who need it, but we can afford it. Does that make any sense?
Oh, there we go. Okay, and so my last question was, is there a plan? And trustee Ross here made a good point about the earthquake thing. I've often wondered that, because we do have some schools in the district, right now I only know of two, LSS and DW Poppy, that when they use, I believe it's Telus, Bell or Virgin, have no cell service, the staff and students. So there's a fear I've always had that, you know, a parent wants to know that their child is safe if there's some sort of emergency, and is there any plan or portion of the tech plan that we'll work on? I know you have to contact directly with those carriers to get a booster or some sort of thing, but I find it, it's kind of worrisome for me that in this day and age, we have large buildings that hold, you know, a thousand people or whatever, that maybe fifty percent of them can't access cell service, so...
Just because the coverage you've thought there of?
Yeah, like when I go to DW Poppy, I have zero, like it just...
And that's something we're working with Alice. And it's hard, because, you know, every tower is a million dollar tower for them. Now, our messaging usually always is gonna be direct messaging through calls, like we have, all our secondaries have direct messaging that sits in the cloud. Basically, you send one phone call and you can send, you can connect with all the phones with, of the parents. Our website sits on a Canadian cloud that is not sitting here, so if there's an emergency, we can be, we will be able to actually communicate to the parents, no matter where they are, because it's not in here, and it's redundant, so it's sitting, you know, somewhere in Ottawa, actually. We will have these devices if the parents needed, if, if they have the application, they will get connected, they will, they will get the message if there is something. That's kind of what we're going, like, I mean, we, this district is actually well redundant in when it comes to communication. Our phone system sits in the cloud. So no matter where you are, no matter what happened here, our phone system will still work. Our Teams, which is our phone system, sits on an app here. I can, I can call from anywhere as I'm sitting here. So there is a lot of redundancy in communication.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have trustee Ward.
Thank you for your presentation. You actually mentioned that some of this stuff is boring, but obviously we're all very engaged, and I've got a few questions here, so I'm gonna, maybe I'll rapid-fire a few of them, and you can pick the toughest ones and, and answer. So one of them was refresh cycle. So I was gonna ask about criteria, and obviously we have numerous concerns, you know, as a board or as a district. We have to look at cost and things like that. Same with vehicles or any asset replacement. So are you always kind of refining your, your, your benchmarking and, and, you know, because as the technology improves, theoretically it'd be nice, except for planned obsolescence, to, to extend the life of these things. So some people have ten-year-old iPads, and it's maybe the battery goes because Apple has that, you know. So, so that's a question. I'm gonna hit you with a few more, and then you can, so some challenging questions here. So one, one would be, you mentioned redundancies, and where do we have redundancies that confuse rather than illuminate? Like, so lots of times with technology, we've got so many different emails and things like that. Obviously with the district, we have one, and we have texting, but so that's one thing to think about, is where have we kind of gone? And actually parallels to another question I was gonna set, ask about is about our, what do you think we, where have we over-techt? Or we're too needy or too hyper-reliant on technology? Now, you're a specialist, so I would think that the more would be better if I was on your side of the equation, but maybe, okay, so...
That would work for me.
Okay, so those are, those questions, and then if you want to pontificate, okay, good, good.
So trustee, trustee's three questions. The first question about the lifecycle.
Yes.
So a laptop, industry-wide, it's four years, to a lifecycle for, for a laptop. A phone system is ten years. But I wanna, I think you're concerned more about the devices that are in the hands of the staff. Yes?
And everything, just...
Everything. So, yeah. So let's say, to me is like, there is the right tools in the right hands, and that's my approach. So a four-year, from one to four, this is a laptop that will serve that teacher with their needs. After four years, that laptop is actually now, will, will be enough for the needs of the kids, let's say in the libraries. And that's what, and if we need to actually enhance the performance of that laptops, we will, can do a little minor stuff, like add more memory or add a little bit, change the hard drive to a faster hard drive. But then we have a device that can sit for three years in a library, kids using. In the school district, we will extend the life of technology, because we know the, you know, the funding is not unlimited. And that's what the beauty about actually knowing the lifecycle and then knowing the needs for our schools, and then on top of that, moving this technology to the hands of the kids who are, cannot afford the technology, or kids with special, are on, you know, special need or on the spectrum, that will really benefit of technology in their hands, and I've done that before, where we will, after seven years, the laptop in the general public kind of hands is kind of had it, but it would be good enough for a kid to be able to take it home and basically do their homework on and do whatever they need to do. And that's what I'm moving toward. So that's one. Second question?
Yes, so really that was a great, my questions related to...
Oh, redundant technology.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's a common sense. Like, to me is, if there's a, if there's an emergency, if I send you an email, you're thinking I'm crazy, because that's really crazy. But if I send you a call or a text saying there is an emergency, that's, that's an emergency I want you to respond to. So tools like these, or phone calls to your home, telling you that there, that's an emergency, that's how we communicate with you. There is an event in a school, yeah, you will get something maybe from here, or you get it on Teams to staff or kids. That's not as an emergency. So that communication to me is common sense, and that's how we, we do it. There is no redundant, there is no overlapping in here. I want to communicate, let's say as a principal with my staff, to say, "Okay, this is a memo" or, or like, "This is the staff meeting agenda." It's not an emergency, but it will be going through Teams toward a folder that says administration, and they will get used to going to there. So that's kind of where we're going with it.
Okay, so, yeah, that's more touching on Joe's...
I will be working with Joe.
Communication and protocol, that's...
Yeah.
That's, that's...
Okay, so, thank you, and thank you for coming to make this presentation tonight. I know that the tech plan has been a long time of development and implementation, and it will take a while to fully roll it out, and has taken an enormous amount of work from so many departments. And we'd like to thank you for updating it, because I remember when we started, it was sort of, "How is this even gonna happen?" We have, you know, older technology and new technology, and we have schools that just are, there's, there's just such an equity, and there's been a significant effort to streamline things and also create that equity throughout the district, in addition to just necessary upgrades and maintenance, which, which were so challenging. So thank you for that really detailed report, and we'd like to wish you a good night. All right, so with that, we need a mover, please. The Board of Education receives the superintendent's report on the district technology plan for information as presented, moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Ward. Any other comments? I don't see any. All those in favor, that is carried. Okay, so with that, we just, we could take a five-minute break, just so that everybody can refill their coffee, because we have some significantly large items coming after that. So can I please get a motion to recess for five minutes, moved by Chair Coburn, seconded by trustee Perot? All those in favor, carried, see you back here at eight thirty-eight. All those in favor, carries, see you back here at eight thirty-eight. Okay, if I can get everybody to please return to their seats. If I can get everybody to please return to their seats. We're looking for trustee Ross. No, you're good, we're good. Okay, we're looking for the superintendent. He's here, he's here today. We got trustee Wilson. I thought maybe Gord went home. And then trustee Ross is gonna come back and join us. It is, it's a bit of a desperately, yeah. Okay. All right, so, most of us are here. So, okay, so we, we've come back from recess. We don't need a motion to come back, but just quickly, I just went to ask for the trustees. Vice Chair Coburn had a motion she was going to bring during new business. And we don't need to vary the whole agenda, but the person, there's a person here who would, who would be interested in this, in this motion being heard, that Vice Chair Coburn wants to bring in. In the interest of allowing that person to get home tonight, we won't be. I'm wondering if two-thirds of trustees, which is what we would need, would agree to change the orders of the day to have trustee Coburn's motion that she was gonna bring under new business heard now. So trustee Coburn, if you would like to move that.
Oh, yeah.
So you need to move your actual motion. Then, well, if we get a second, we'll need two-thirds to have it heard now.
Okay. I'm pretty loud. Just let me get my motion. I think, I did send it to Judy. She, it's very simple and small. It's one line. There it is. That the Langley Board of Education officially acknowledges February as Black History Month.
Could I get a second there? By trustee Todd. So, in order, so, it would be being brought now, we would be varying the orders of the day, so we need two-thirds to have that added to the agenda. So all those in favor of adding to that, to the agenda and hearing it now? That's unanimous? Okay, so that is now on the agenda. So you're now actually gonna move the motion, which is that the Langley Board of Education officially acknowledges February as Black History Month. That's being moved by trustee Coburn, trustee Wilson. Well, he moved it on to the agenda, but you had your hand up last time. So you're seconding the actual motion? And then would the mover like to speak to the motion?
I sure would.
Okay.
Wrong. So, Black History Month. The people of African descent have played a role in shaping the heritage history and identity of the Canadian nation. Although this receives very little attention in our history books, especially in B.C., where this is not part of our curriculum. There is no mention that many loyalists who were, who came here after the American Revolution and settled in the Maritimes were of African descent. And there is no mention of the sacrifices made in the wartime by soldiers of African-American descent or African descent as far back as the War of eighteen twelve. Few Canadians know that many were enslaved in the territory that is now called Canada, and how those who fought against this enslavement have laid the foundation of Canada, and Canada being diverse and an inclusive society. In December nineteen ninety-five, the Canadian House of Commons officially recognized February as Black History Month in Canada, along with many other nations in the world. Given that it is now twenty-twenty, and Canada's black population is growing in numbers and diversification, one of the fastest-growing populations in Canada, and one in three African Canadians are born in Canada, and that number is expected to rise. These, these are Canadians, and they, they deserve to see their story, and they deserve to learn about their history. The face of our district is changing, and we are becoming increasingly diverse, even in our own diversity. And I know that in my motion, I cannot dictate to educators to teach this or that. And I certainly don't have this intention, nor is this my point. I think acknowledging February as Black History Month will start this important educational conversation. And I have no doubt, that especially after what we are experiencing here tonight, that if we do, that our educators in this district will take it and grow it, just like they have done with almost every other single initiative that we have thrown their way. And with that, I thank you for seconding the motion.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. I'm wondering, is there any other speakers to this motion? Uh, trustee Todd.
Thank you. I certainly think it's appropriate, Diversity Respect Week, that we acknowledge this. I'm glad you brought it forward, and I would urge trustees to support this unanimously.
I do not see any other speakers. Thank you, Vice Chair Coburn, for bringing this motion forward, and for making the lovely statement that you did. I think it's an important, more important acknowledgement, and so, for sure, I'll be supporting this motion. So with that, I'll call the questions. We have no more speakers, so all those in favor. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. So with that, we will return to the regular orders of the day. So we are now back on item nine, which is the Secretary Treasurer's reports. We have the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty amended budget, or, yeah, budget by law. Over to you, Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to provide an update on our amended budget reminder for trustees that act, a school act, we are required to do an amended, there's an update from the Ministry on Funding, which did happen on December the fifteenth, I believe it was, the last day before the Christmas break, where they do the recalc. So we do have to file an amended budget. Oops, that was very quick. Be done in no time. Just wanted to remind trustees, in your package is the amended budget, and it basically has two sections, the statement sections, which are basically a consolidation of all the funds types within the budget, which is what the budget bylaw is, is based on. We also have our different schedules. The schedule two are the operating statements, which is the bulk of our funding, where we'll spend most of our night tonight, where the funds are that the district uses on its day-to-day operations. The schedule threes are your special purpose, and the schedule four are the capital. Just wanted to start with a high-level total revenue. That is going to be part of the amended budget. As a district, we are approaching, you know, just under two hundred and fifty-eight million dollars in total revenue as a district. The bulk of those funds are in our operating grant, just over two hundred and twelve million of that. And as you can see, the bulk of those funds do come from the Ministry of Education, two hundred and twenty-one million of those funds, with the next-largest category being a tuition at fifteen million dollars, which is, a large part is our international student program. On the expense side, we will have just under two hundred and sixty-two million dollars in expenses as a district in our amended budget. Most of that is, once again, in our instruction, with two hundred and fourteen million dollars spent there, with the next-largest piece being twenty-four point six, point seven million dollars in operations and maintenance. So you can see there, the split between the individual funds, with the bulk of it being in our operating, just under two hundred and fourteen million dollars. I just wanted to throw up the bylaw slide here. This is what, in the end, the trustees will have to be voting on tonight. We'll have to be doing all three readings of that. And the bylaw would be two hundred and sixty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four, which would encompass all the funds that we, as a board, are responsible to submit to the amended budget. Focusing on the operating, which is where most of our funds come and are spent to maintain the district. Starting with the revenue, you can see that they've grown, and mainly, they've grown from the provincial ministry grants, just under two point five million dollars. The bulk of that is the changes from the recalculation. When we do the seventeen oh one counts in September, once we know our enrollment numbers, one point five of that million comes from that recalculation, due to the fact that we had more students, and more identified students in our special needs categories. We also have in there a grant for the QP labor settlement of about eight hundred thousand dollars, which is a separate grant that the ministry has put in, now that the, all the QPs across the province have signed, and that is our portion of the, the cost for those contracts being implemented for this school year. So those are the big changes for that category. If you see the other provincial grants, you can see that there's a slight decline in that number. That is basically due to a program that we have for diversion funding for students that are returning from grade twelve from last year, that have needs that we can't necessarily accommodate within our district, as they are looking for more life skill needs and workplace needs. And we have an outside agency that we divert some of our ministry funding to them to be able to provide those services for those students. It's usually just one or two. This year, there was seven or eight, so this one, that did impact our total number of revenue. Tuition is down, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That is mainly due to the international summer program. It wasn't as large this year, and it has been, started to be phased out. There won't be a special international student program for the summer for next year. So that's the reflective of that. You'll also see that reflective in some of the reduction in the cost side of the programs as well. Other revenue went up just over seventy-eight thousand. That was a bunch of little grants that we have received over the course of the year. And then our investment income has gone down by about fifty thousand dollars. On the expense side, and I'll go into more detail, some of the changes for each of these, but I wanted to show you what that kind of looks like. As you can see, it works out to be just over ninety percent of our operating grants are related to salaries and benefits, with the teachers obviously being the largest share of that, followed by our SEAs. And our benefits is a lot, a large portion. Our servicing supplies is just under twenty and a half million dollars. And I'll go through some of those changes in more detail. But I wanted to put that in perspective for trustees, and show a bit of a comparison of our amended budget compared to the provincial averages. Granted, this is not an apples-to-apples, because the pie chart on the left is our amended budget, and the pie chart on the right is the preliminary budgets, obviously, for the province, because they haven't been filed yet, but it gives an indication. So you can see, we're fairly in line with most categories. We do spend more on instruction than the provincial average, by almost a whole percentage point. And that's offset by lower amounts in the maintenance category mainly, and a little bit on the transportation. The transportation one, I guess, might be a little skewed, because it is a percentage of the total budget, and for those up north, they would be spending a higher portion on their transportation budgets than those in the metro districts. But on the rest, I think it's a fairly, fair comparison. The teacher salaries, you can see some of the changes. We made some adjustments for Central. You can see the reduction in the ISP summer program for the teaching. We had with the lower program costs there. When we did the preliminary budget, there was discussion on stopping the Equestrian program, but that was restored, that program, so we added back those two teachers for the amended budgets. That's reflected there. As always, we always have teachers that weren't always in their positions for the full year, with late starts in those. So there's about four hundred thousand dollars in late-started vacancies as of the time that we did the budget. And then there were some other minor teacher adjustments of forty-four thousand dollars. For the principals and VPs, trustees will remember that we had set up some money as restricted amount, that we were doing over a two-year program for supporting admin, because we had a lot of new VPs in the system over the last couple of years. This is the second year of that program, and this is reflective of that. And you also see that coming out of the restricted surpluses amount. The next line there is reclassification. We had one of our district principals was being charged the wrong category, so it needed to be a part of our excluded amount. So you'll see that it was reflective, it's just a move between two classifications. We've encouraged our admin with the amounts that they have in accumulated surpluses to be able to up their admin time and reduce some of their teaching times, so they could work on their action plans in their schools. So a number of the schools were able to do that with their funds from the previous year. So that was about ninety-four thousand dollars. The summer session was a little lower, and then some other minor adjustments. On the educational assistance side, we added two additional bus monitors this year. There were a higher number of SEAs in our summer programs, as those have continued to expand. We had a little more with our ISP educational assistance. Those are through our ISP programs. We had late starts of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and QP pay increases of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Those were the main items for that category. Support staff also had the provincial raise of three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Some of the schools, I think, made adjustments on their noontime supervisor positions at schools. I think some of that is just difficulty in finding people to take those roles. Late starts for those maintenance positions. We've had a few vacancies, and those have been hard for us to find in short order. So we've had some of those positions be vacant for a little while, and that's the savings that we recognized from that. Clerical late starts, and some transportation vacancies. The other professionals, you can see the, the offset to the one I mentioned that was under the admin and principals. And then this year, we added another executive assistant for our learning support. We found that with our restored language, with the resource teachers, that the learning support, people needed some more support in being able to manage the complexity of those languages. So that was a position that was added this year. Our substitute costs have changed, mainly due to late starts and vacancies for the beginning of the year. You can see that under the DTOC line of four hundred and three thousand dollars. You also see that the non-contractual have gone up ninety-one thousand dollars. Most of that comes from our schools, using their surplus money from the prior year in DTOC time for programs within their schools. And you can see also increases on the late starts and vacancies on the casual. It's just broken up between schools, centrals, and the central SEAs. Benefits, we put in an amount of just under five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for an arbitration that happened due to the conversion from the MSP model to the employer healthcare tax model. That was a one-time payout that we, as a district, had to make towards that. There's also the benefit portion of the QP raises for just over a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then with all the various staffing changes at schools and, and at Central, you can see the corresponding benefit adjustments of fifty thousand and seventy-three thousand. Our servicing supplies, not a lot of changes on the categories. So I have a separate slide on the actual supplies one, where the big changes were. The only other one is, there was a fifty-four thousand dollar increase in professional endowment and travel, which usually happens, once again, with the carryforwards balances from schools. The dues and fees went up this year. That was due to the fact that for the property that we bought at Northeast Latimer, we bought it at a point in time after the property tax assessments are done. So unfortunately, the district gets to pay the bill for that one year, for that, before it becomes a school site. So that is for this, the half of this year. We did the other half last year. So unfortunately, that was a sizable hit for us, but that'll disappear now that we've owned the property, and we won't be paying the property tax on that. The insurance has gone down. That's a combination of the school protection fees have gone down, but a little bit of the fleet has gone up. So the net difference between the two is about thirty-six thousand dollars. The supplies are six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Trustees will also remember that we also had set up a two-year surplus fund for action plants. plans, action plan support for our schools, and this is the second year of that, so that'll deplete that fund, which you'll see shortly when we show the accumulated surplus amounts. A lot of these next amounts are also from the carryforward surplus amounts in schools as they add those in, so school supplies, meets and requests, and computer hardware in schools have all gone up as they've added those amounts in from their unspent funds from last year. We've talked about copier charges. The budgets have gone up at schools just to accommodate the, the trends that they'd have been seeing. We have seen some change in that over the last two months in the positive, so we are really hoping that that becomes an ongoing change in the district. There was some, just under fifty thousand for furniture and equipment in schools and just over twenty-one thousand for special education equipment, and that's where we get the six hundred and seventy-six thousand in supplies. These are changes from the amended budget, but I thought I would show all the items that were in the local capital that we will be funding out of our operating grants so that we can have a clear idea on that. We had the presentation on the access points that were added over the summer, so the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand is the last portion of that. Some of the access points arrived last school year and wasn't part of that fund. This was the amount that arrived in the summer and was installed over the summer. Computer hardware, that's just for buying devices, is at six hundred and five thousand. Portables, which is four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and you'll see that, that a lot of that came from the eleven portables that we moved over to LSS and LEC, but also the other ones that we moved around the district that we took from RE Mountain and a few from Yorkson Creek and that we moved around to various needs in the district. We had twenty-seven thousand in furniture equipment at schools. We had put some money into DW Poppy last year. Not all of it was completed in time for June thirtieth, so the ninety-three thousand is the remainder of that half million dollars that we had set in the budget for last year. We've done some work here with the reboard, revitalization of the school board office so that we changed where people were located. It was getting awfully tight and we had to make some changes to the building to make this building usable for us as we continue to grow and go with the direction that we need to go in the next couple of years, and it required a, a big shift and also the setup of a classroom in the board office, which I think is going to be phenomenal for the staff here and be a demonstration classroom for people out in the system. So I think that was a nice change that was done to the board office. It's the first change that's been done in probably twenty-some-odd years, and it may be the last change done in twenty-some-odd years, but it was good to do while we were able to do that with some of our surplus funds. We have two hundred and thirty thousand for vehicles. We also had some money put aside to do some conversion at Peter Urt, and that was what was left. That wasn't done before June thirtieth. And then James Anderson Learning Center, we did rentals there. That is now where Richard Team is now located out of. It was a site that was used by Swiss Program and ELL. They have been relocated, and now that is our IT hub, and so we had to make some changes there just to allow for the infrastructure that's needed to do that. So just kind of a bit of a summary, we've gone through the revenue expenses, and basically that puts us into a deficit, deficit position of three point seven million dollars comparable to a deficit in the spring budget of just under two point two million dollars. So the board will need to appropriate some funds of three point seven, two point two already has been appropriated and is made up of the following. So I wanted to show you kind of our surplus balance at the end of June twenty nineteen, so it's twelve point seven million dollars in total. We have the appropriation of three point seven, and if that's where our results come in, we would end June thirtieth, this June, at just over eight point nine million dollars. So the proposal from staff is that the one-time MSP payment to QP would come out of that board restricted surplus, as that's what is intended for, is unforeseen one-time items. So the proposal is that we take that from there. We would then, as a board, need to work to repay those funds over the next two years. The two point two million was already restricted for the preliminary budget. Proposed taking a hundred and forty-three thousand, just under, from infrastructure replacement, and that would be mostly the access points and the things at Peter Urt and those type of things. We would still be able to maintain the half million dollars for student capacity needs, which would be for portables, which we will have to probably look at using some of that this coming summer, especially up in the Willoughby area. The three hundred thousand that we'd set aside for the portables at LSS, we would unrestrict that, and then I had mentioned earlier, the admin development of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which was the second year of the two-year plan, and the three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of school surpluses that we allowed schools to carry forward to this fiscal year, as well as the second year of the action plans for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that would get us to three point seven million dollars in restricted amounts to balance our amended budget. Just wanted to quickly go through our special purpose funds, some of the changes there. Just a reminder that special purpose funds are items that there's an obligation that we would have to pay back if we didn't spend those funds, so we have to report them separately. Here's a list of, I, I did it on just the revenues because the expenses are always equal to the revenues in our special purpose funds, so they're basically in and out fund. Our annual facilities grant has gone down four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. That's because in the preliminary budget, we just allocated all to special purpose, but depends on how it's funded by the ministry, so that corresponding offset to that is in our capital accounts, so the funding didn't change for our new facilities grant, just the allocation did. Most of these other ones are small changes, are carryover amounts from the previous month, year for the learning improvement, Pun Strong Start and Ready Set Learn, those are all carryforward amounts and will just be added and spent. The big change is the classroom enhancement fund, which is from the teacher's restored language, has gone up seven and a half million dollars. One of the drivers is that in the preliminary, they didn't fund us the full amount, they only funded seventy percent of the amount from the previous year, and also they had worked with us on our caseless language for our resource teachers in ELL, which they are now funding us for, so that also showed as a, as a bump up this year compared to the previous year. And then we had a few new grants that were required to be set up as special purpose amounts for the First Nations Transportation Mental Health and Changing Results for Young Readers. The change in the settlement workers in schools is also a carryforward amount. So there's a couple of motions that staff are requesting the board to consider tonight, the first being to unrestrict some of these amounts to, be used to balance the amended budget, and those are in line with what I had shown you on the previous slide with the accumulated operating surplus. And then we would need the three readings of the amended budget bylaw for the two hundred and sixty-three million dollars.
Okay, so I do have trustee Ross who wanted to ask a question, and then we can move into the motions unless there's any, and trustee Ward. So we'll go to trustee Ross.
Appreciate the presentation, Secretary Treasurer. I have quite a few questions, but I'll try and limit them. What is the burn rate for our cash per day? How much cash do we burn through every day?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it's just over a million dollars a day.
Okay, so a million dollars a day we burn through, okay. I see there's some question about the summer program not being, actually, it's not going to happen next year for the International Students Program, which is a big change for us, which is a big wave, the flag for me, because that's how people are introduced to our district, so obviously, you're, you're, you're comfortable with that. So I think I'll have a discussion with you on the side on that, maybe you can just give me some background on that. But what I'd like to know is, what are the storm clouds? We've got, you know, we've got issues, you know, reading the newspaper every day about coronavirus, et cetera, but what are the, the storm clouds that you see that you're concerned? Because I really don't want the public here, I mean, there's, there's a few, and there's a few online, to think that things are going right in Miami. We've got problems in River City. It's a challenge, right? And you're the one that has to unfortunately solve those problems, so can you share with us what your concerns are? What keeps you awake at night? Thank you.
I was waiting for that.
Everybody was waiting for that.
A couple of things, like you mentioned, the ISP does raise concerns, especially with the virus that is started there and is now spreading. There's no way for telling what that does to our international program for next year and, and subsequent years. As I've shared with this board, and I believe with the public, we have a deficit structure that we have done to slowly draw down our accumulated surplus, which you can see is coming down, and we now need to be right sizing that ship so that we have a budget that is sustainable in the, the long term. So we have had lots of conversations on finding efficiencies and finding different ways of doing things to be able to maintain all the programs that we do, but also smooth out that transition. So that is what would keep me up at night, is managing that controlled conversion back to a balanced budget structure instead of the deficit structure that we have today.
And the superintendent did want to weigh in on that, and I will add trustee Todd to the list also.
So in terms of summer program, we rarely get more than one to two children that we turn out of that in all the years it goes. So that was the major consideration. There was great promises offered, but it is giving us little to zero return. So the decision was made, not just here, but in a number of districts to move away, away from that. Most of the business that we draw in that way is done through other marketing efforts, so it won't hurt us on that side. The other thing also is we currently already have in place for the fall, seven hundred and seventy students returning that are already in place, and a diversified market for the remaining two hundred that we do not rely on China, it is not our number one market. I say all those things because we've been anticipating these types of things that can be bumps in the road for years, and we've really tried to be very strategic going forward. So nervous, absolutely, but feel pretty confident, and we were one of the very few districts in all of Metro that actually hit their targets this year, and I think it's because we've taken that strategy. So I just want to make sure I commented on that.
To add to the superintendent's point, we do still have international students that take advantage of our regular summer schedule sessions, so we do keep students here for that and do that, so that is not stopping. These are just the specialized, short-term programs for international students, and as he mentioned, that they were basically, I think it was one or two agents that wanted to run them and most of them didn't stay.
Yes, trustee Ross.
So, you know, there's always wisdom with the crowd, and I love the wisdom of the crowd. We burn through a million dollars a day. We're the only district in the province, in the metro, that has met their international student targets. What I'm saying here to the public and to those in TV land that are watching on their small screen, if you have any other ideas on how we can make money or save money, I would love to hear them, and the secretary treasurer would love to hear them. So I make this an open invitation to anyone out there, anyone who is listening to us, send us an email. Send me an email, send the secretary treasurer one, or call us. Yeah, call us. Anyway, thank you very much.
So with that trustee, trustee Ward's asked to be taken off, those are good, okay. Trustee Todd.
Thank you. So I learned much more about burn rate. I learned much more about burn rate than I, I may need to know, but I am somewhat concerned because we, we had a planned deficit of two point one, and, and now we're bumping up at three point six, and so, so that is a day and a half according to burn rate, and there was an increase in funding at the provincial level of seven to eight hundred thousand, and then on top of that, we added another. Now, a portion of it, yes, was the unknown, it was the arbitration and that, so that's where we need to be somewhat concerned, and that special fund will help us this year, but we really need to be planful and, and talk about what financial sustainability really is, and, and we've, we've kind of, for the next year, we have, I believe, two point one million, two point four, and, but if there is not an increase in funding, and we don't know, there's a new financial funding model out there, we don't know, and if there isn't an increase, our district will have to make harder decisions next year and perhaps even more difficult decisions the year after. So is that correct, and, and that's where we're trending towards?
Yeah, we still have, I mean, accumulated surplus set aside two point four million dollars, but that's all we have basically to smooth out this transition. There is always the uncertainty with funding which comes any year, but I know this, it was last year, we had some impacts on our funding less than what we thought we would be receiving. The funding review, they've kind of deferred parts of that, the larger parts, the ones that had myself and the superintendent the most concerned, those have been deferred, but we still don't know what the impact for this district is for funding for the coming school year.
Thank you. So that has concluded, because let's, I thank you, Secretary Treasurer, for the report. I know there's been a lot of work that's been, been put into both the budget, but also in looking at how we can invest back into the district after a very long period of time where there were significant cuts coming out of the deficit, and there wasn't the ability to properly invest in the places that needed to be invested in the district, and it's been an exercise in our planning to look at where we needed to wisely invest back in, and although we're coming to the end perhaps of those, those larger investments, the ability to do that with some uncertainty in the future of finances and what the model's going to look like and just general uncertainty, I'm grateful to see that, that these investments are still taking place in our district and that there's been just some really great work being done in getting the places that need upgrading or just investments in, in educational opportunities into our district, and I'd like to thank the team for the hard work that they've done and you've done in doing so. So with that, we have a number of motions that we need to work through tonight. So the first one is our, a motion that the Board of Education approves staff to appropriate, so unrestrict, the following restricted surplus amounts to balance the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty amended budget. The amounts are five hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety internally restricted appropriated by the board, a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six internally restricted for infrastructure replacement, three hundred thousand internally restricted for capacity issues at LSS and LEC, a hundred and twenty-five thousand internally restricted for admin development, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand for school surpluses, and a hundred and fifty thousand district initiatives to support schools. May I please get a mover? Moved by vice chair Coburn, seconded by trustee Ross. Any comments or questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion's carried unanimously. The next motion is that school district number thirty-five Langley amend annual budget bylaw two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four be given first reading, moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Perro. Any comments or questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Next, and that's carried unanimously also. Next motion is that school district number thirty-five Langley amended annual budget bylaw two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four be given second reading, moved by trustee Russ, seconded by trustee Todd. Any comments on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion's carried unanimously. And the next motion is that the Board of Education, school district number thirty-five Langley, approves having all three readings of the amended annual budget bylaw two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four at tonight's meeting, moved by trustee Wilson, seconded by trustee Perro. This one needs to be approved unanimously, so all those in favor? Motion's carried unanimously. And then we have a motion that school district number thirty-five Langley amend annual budget bylaw two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four be given. 2019-2020 in the amount of 263,932,224 be given third reading, passed and adopted on this, the 25th day of February 2020. Moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Williams. Well, Wilson. We haven't a trustee, sorry. We had an election tonight. Any comments or questions on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion's carried unanimously. All right, we have concluded the budget items with an extra trustee. So we are on to number 9.2, conveyance of students.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is conveyance of students. I'd like to call for it Assistant Superintendent Mal Gill, as he has kindly taken on this work for us. It's not been a fun job, but he's done admirable. It meant the budget that we were looking for, different ways of doing things and efficiencies. And one of the things that we've looked into is our transportation of students and who we transportate, transport, well, it's hard for me to say apparently, transportate. Who we transport and what kind of fees that we charge, because there was a grant a few years back by the ministry that allowed us to stop charging for students. And I think a lot of people misunderstand that the ministry pays for our full transportation of students with that grant, and that's not a true statement. So at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Mal Gill, who's going to go through that. And once again, thank you for taking this on.
Thank you, secretary treasurer. So what keeps me up at night, trustee Ross? For the last few weeks, transportation conveyance of students has kept me up at night. So to answer that question, before we begin the presentation, I'm proud to be a part of a district that normally, and starts with the word yes. And I think that with all of our students in our, in our schools, we've always gotten to a place, or always tried, our leaders, our teachers, our support staffs always go to a place of yes when we can. And I think that the situation that we find ourselves in right now comes from a place of absolute care, where we've attempted to provide a service to students over the past few years, which we simply can't maintain fiscally. And I think you're going to see some of the numbers that we're going through, and you've read my board report already, but I did want to start from a place that the transportation situation that we're in currently certainly is something that we struggle with, I struggle with personally around students who will be receiving busing and students who may not be as a result. So just to outline for you our current situation, so currently, there's no charge for our students for transportation. There's about 1,500 students, including our international students that are taking our transportation, are taking buses in our, in our district. That's not including our physically barrier students. And just on a side note, our ISP students do pay for transportation, so, but they are on buses, so that needed to be included in our total number. And over 50% of our students are either courtesy riders or cross-boundary students. And we are servicing cross-boundary students, and those cross-boundary students, currently our policies are quite clear that we're not to be, we're not supposed to be supporting cross-boundary students as far as transportation is concerned. The other piece I'll be discussing in this report is legacy agreements, something over the last several years, we've entered into agreements with different communities based on changes in their community via configuration, boundary, and other changes. And the other piece of information you should know is that we have over 30 bus routes in total, including our, including our physically barrier students. So we have a large, large busing fleet. A little bit of history for you. So far, we did charge at one point all students, eligible and courtesy riders, and we did that until 2016. Secretary Treasurer pointed that out. In 2016, we were provided with a grant. That grant of $260,000 at the time covered the fees at that particular time. Unfortunately, the grant total of $260,000 that we receive yearly now only covers the eligible riders that are riding our bus. So that's a bit of a concern because now we've got over half of the students that currently, whose fees, based on the premise of the ministry originally around covering fees with the grant, now are not covered through the grant process. So again, that leads to a bit of difficulty for us. Overall, our transportation costs, as far as expenditures are concerned, it's way beyond the $260,000. We actually work with, from the last year's budget, we had $2.6 million as far as a cost. If you want to look at that per rider cost, and this is a really, really, really rough estimate, it's about $1,400 per rider. We do, within those, with that $2.6 million, we do have field trips, and we have athletics and different things that come out of that total, so we just need to include that as a thought as well. The other piece that we need to be aware of is that not all those costs are included as far as the ministry does cover refresh of some of our buses. Our problem, however, is that some of our buses, we've already refreshed, and they're still in the system and we're using them. So you can't refresh a bus twice, so that we run into a bit of an issue with that, leading to the next issue, which is our current reality, is that we, if we continue to try and maintain the current service levels that we have right now, over the next four years, we'll have to replace five buses at a cost of about $150,000 a bus, over and above the $2.6 million as well. So again, costs for transportation are high. We've already seen a number of programs this evening that we've commented about around students, those come at a cost as well. And so we're looking at trying to find the efficiency that secretary treasurer has talked about, and one of those places is certainly in a place where we can go to, which is transportation. So just for moving forward, what are, what's a district plan? So eligible riders are not impacted in any way. So if you qualify by our policy for ridership, you would continue to ride and no fees would be charged. Courtesy riders, and I'll explain what courtesy riders are in a little bit more detail, would be charged or will be charged if the seat is available. And that's really important, that we don't want to make any promises that we're going to be putting in additional runs on certain routes just so that we can pick up courtesy riders. The cost is $400 for individual rider and a $600 cap per family. The other additional consideration is the legacy routes, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. Just for your information, we have some information around districts around us and what they're charging for their courtesy riders. And again, of note, eligible riders in each of those districts are not being charged. So we're looking at comparable cost. Abbott'sford School District has currently just gone through a review and gone to the 400 and 600 cap. Langley School District for next year is looking at something similar for us. And then in addition to that, Suri is currently under review. And so they're looking at changing not just the amount, but their actual policy itself. So they're working through that as well. The other piece that I think that's really comparable, and I think is a question that's come up over and over again, is the question around walk limits. So I thought I'd include that information for all of you, so you could understand that, again, we're within norms around the district around walk limits. So, and I know that there's certain considerations that we have in our own community versus others, but I just wanted to share that, those numbers with you as well, to say that those numbers are comparable as well. Courtesy riders, what is a courtesy rider? According to policy 3850, a courtesy rider is a student that lives within our walk distance. And for K to 7, our walk distance are 3.2 kilometers. The middle is 3.2, is also 3.2 kilometers, and we have a bit of a discrepancy because of the secondary schools, because we have a case, I don't have to tell you, K 568912 and the K 7812 model. We have the 812s that are at 4.8 kilometers in some of our areas. And again, it should be pointed out that we do have a priority order as far as pickup is concerned for courtesy riders. Students living furthest away will be the ones who be first picked, first picked up. And again, they must be living on the route. And students whose siblings have been granted the privilege of riding as well would be then included at the next level, and then the youngest students, if all other factors are equal. So that's your definition of a courtesy rider, and these are the folks, the students who would be charged, or the families who would be charged. The routes that would, would no longer be operating were the ones that go against our policy. So policy 3850 in section 2.6 indicates that school district transportation services will not be provided for cross-boundary schools. So student registration, and it refers to administrative policy 7008. And again, parents, guardians exercising the option of sending their children to schools other than those normally serving the areas in which they reside shall be wholly responsible for any transportation arrangements and costs. So again, those are what I'm referring to when I talk about cross-boundary students. So Richard Bullpit is one of our legacy routes. If you can remember, for some of the trustees who were around when we reconfigured RC Garnet, there was a time where there was a number of students who were impacted by the reconfiguration, so we created a bus that took some of our RC Garnet students out to Richard Bullpit. When we did that, we created a situation where we had a number of our students who were relying on that for transportation daily, and we were now at a point where those students who are, this year, they're in grade five, and they're moving on to their middle school, and so they would be impacted in a different way according to the, and they would be impacted by the policy itself, and therefore, for most of them, would not qualify for busing. The other one, the other impact is going to be on the siblings who remain at Richard Bullpit. Now, we did communicate with parents when they chose to keep their siblings at Richard Bullpit. We did tell them at the time that we could not guarantee busing all the way through their students' time at Richard Bullpit. So I feel like that's been communicated to those, to those families. Aldergrove Secondary in DW, to DW Poppy, this is a route that's been in existence for a few years now. Mainly, it's to support our students who attend Coghlan Fundamental Elementary, K to 7, who are wishing to transition to DW Poppy. And those students currently are living in the ACSS catchment, and so therefore, they're cross-boundary students who are now moving from, from ACSS, being bused from ACSS to DW Poppy. And the third legacy route, which is not a cross-boundary route, but certainly it's a route that was created based on in-catchment bus route. Again, some trustees may have been around. The HD MS to LSS bus was created as a shuttle for students from HD Stafford to LSS, and that's been going on for several years as well. And the district did promise that we would monitor the route and check for performance. So those are the three routes that would be impacted. Overall, as far as ridership, we have 648 eligible riders. We have 212 cross-boundary students, 447 courtesy riders, for a total of 1307. Again, the international students are not included in those numbers, and that's why there's a bit of a discrepancy in the numbers as far as the initial number in my report and this number there. Communication plan, because obviously, this is going to cause a great deal of angst in the community, and we understand that. I think we need to get to our communication plan as soon as possible. We'll be communicating with our administrators as early as February the 26th, again, a target date, trying to call a quick meeting so that they're aware. We need to provide letters to all our policy riders, so those that are eligible riders, they still need to be informed about what's happening, because I think there's going to be a lot of rumors and conversations in the community. So they all get a separate letter, and we have their contact information based on who those students are this year. And then we'll have to figure out who the new students are K to 12 as they start to register, and we'll, we have a plan for that. Letter to non-policy riders, so those are our courtesy riders, so what are we going to, we have to be able to frame for them that we changed where we, what we're doing, that those courtesy riders will have to be put on a waitlist until our routes are built, and then those, those students who are eligible, based on the criteria for courtesy riders, would then be charged accordingly to our, to our, to our system. The third group will be the cross-boundaries or the legacy riders, and letting them know that those buses will no longer be, be in service for their students. The biggest piece, or the next piece, will be the transportation webpage, which is going to be a very large job, because we need to ensure that as students log on to that page, that, and parents and families, that they're given the absolute correct information. And working towards that, I've already connected with Richard. You met this evening, Iskander, our director of technology, as well as our, Tim Andronik, who works in our transportation department, and he's reached out to our software company that works on creating our routes as well, to help to support a team effort to create a website that is going to be clear and concise. And at the same time, I'm working with Joe Abshire, our communications chair, to provide the appropriate messaging to all of the impacted families. Really important to know that we're talking about 1,300 students. Of those 1,300 students, we're talking about five or 600 that are going to be impacted. We're looking at a total of 21,000 to 22,000 students in our district. And note that the students in the classroom right now are subsidizing, subsidizing the ridership of many of our students. And that is really the concern that we have. We need to find the efficiencies. We're doing our very best to do this in a way that can be supportive in light of the situation. And again, there's going to be one-off situations that is administrators in our buildings, teachers, and support staff that are going to bring back to us that we're going to have to consider. But other than that, I think moving forward, I think we need to come to a place where, in order to facilitate an appropriate transportation system that can serve the needs of our eligible riders and provide enough supports for, at least provide seats for some of our courtesy riders, we need to make some changes in the way we do business.
Thank you. I appreciate the assistance superintendent. So I do, so we will start with trustee Ross, then we will go to trustee Todd, then we will go to trustee Wilson, then I've got vice chair Coburn, and then I have trustee Ward. All right, so I'm going to clear the thing here, and then we're going to go to trustee Ross. Oh, I get to, I have to, I get to go first, so I have to close my.
Okay, I think we're okay. I'm keen to support this. I think it's important to have some context. Could you give some context with metro districts? What do they spend on courtesy riders?
There you go. So many of our metro districts, like Vancouver, for example, actually doesn't have a transportation system that they would be utilizing. I think we have Suri School District, you saw up there. Interesting, when you start to look at the total numbers that are served by Suri School District, it's 73,000 students. The total numbers are actually quite comparable to the number of students we actually serve. So, so again, so.
So we're in a clean space. There you go. Thank you. Thank you for that. So they don't have to deal with us. We do. And just doing the quick math, you could see that, you know, the Chilwak School District is going to generate almost a million dollars. Chilwak 34, Abbott'sford 34 District is going to generate 1.2 million dollars, something to that effect with what we have here. And at this present time, just to bring clarity, we do not charge courtesy riders. That's correct. Okay, so they get zero. Okay, so you might want to check your slide up there, because they, the slides said that actually, we, maybe this, what we planned is.
This is what we planned.
Oh, this is what we planned.
That's what we planned.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that's the planner. I'm very supportive of it. It'll generate roughly, you know, my math, half a million dollars anyway. And we need to support solving the financial problems of the district. And so this is not just the burden of the secretary treasurer, but it's the burden of all of us. And so I would really support this. I think this is what we really must do. We don't really have a choice. Thank you.
So thank you. So we now have trustee Todd.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Mal Gill. This is one of those difficult conversations. It's, it's a brave path to enter upon, and, but I've always felt in my job as a trustee, my number one mantra is always to protect instructional services and what actually happens in the classroom or at the school level. And this is where, through, as you stated, no fault of our own, we adopted a can-do and a yes policy. And I remember when the announcement was made about the grants, all of a sudden, you know, it was, it was changed literally within a month or two. know, it was it was changed literally within a month or two. And what districts had been doing was wiped out. But now, what is happening is we're eroding financial resources to an area that we probably had no real intent to get involved in. If you do the math, forty dollars per month, that's two dollars a day. And I and I I think that's probably money well spent even for a courtesy rider to know that they're going safely to a school and and coming home again, two dollars a day. So, again, I will be supporting this, but it is a difficult conversation and it's a difficult task to kind of undo what has happened because we thought we could cover this off. But as we talked about earlier, financial sustainability is really important for our district and we have to make the tough choices moving forward. I was just had you ballparked how much I know trustee Ross has done that, but the revenue that might come out of this if every courtesy rider chose. And I guess you might also want to address like environmental sustainability. I know you talked about the replacement cost of buses. To me, I think it's far more efficient to run a bus than have twenty parents driving to the school, but you might want to touch on that as well.
So, I actually haven't. I think it's somewhere around two hundred and sixty to two hundred and eighty thousand. I'm looking over it somewhere around there. So, it's actually right around the same amount for the grant. If we were to charge every courtesy rider and they would actually pay for and that would be that would be including our current cross boundary riders as well. Okay. And again, around the whole piece around the environmental piece, I again, we try and do our part as best we can. I wonder, difficult because, you know, there is no right answer with this. It's just like the whole busing piece around getting people to school or not. Where's our responsibility fall and where doesn't it? And we're we're going to continue to to do the work we need to do around the students who are eligible. And those buses are still going to be provided and we're going to have full buses that are going to get to schools because the courtesy seats that are available are going to be taken up by students. So, again, environmentally, we're going to do what we can as far as doing our part in providing a safe ride to school.
So, follow up. What's our current busing cost? Is it about thirty-five dollars an hour when we bill back to schools? Do you know how much that is?
I'm not sure if Assistant Secretary of Treasurers Chan.
Maybe that's something we can look at for trustee Mel. Okay. So, thank you, trustee Todd. Our next speaker is trustee Wilson.
Thank you for your presentation, Assistant Superintendent Mel Gil. How did you get chosen to present this wonderful news? Was there paper, scissors, or rocks? Because I noticed you had cheering at the beginning and I'm feeling like that might stop once people watch this lovely live stream. So, I noticed that you did some comparisons with the other districts, which I really appreciate because I do like to have that. And I just feel like I've thought for many years that our walk limits are too far. I see that, you know, they are in line with other districts. I know you talked about Surrey's maybe looking at their policy. I don't know if that's something that they're looking at, but I just think here in Langley, we don't have access to the public transit that some places have. And three point two and four point eight, like a three point two kilometer walk for a grade one or grade two student, I just think, wow, that is pretty far. And the same with the four point eight. So, I will raise this and we're reviewing policies and admin procedures. I have brought it up in the past and I just can't seem to let it go because I think of that four point eight kilometers. And if you live four point seven kilometers away and you don't have the financial means to pay for your child to take that bus, that's going to add an hour each way. We talk about not busing kids because it's too far and it takes up all of this time out of their lives that they could have for sports or homework or but that's a really long period of time each way. So, I appreciate your report and I totally understand why we need to keep more money in classrooms. And I think it makes sense that a lot of, you know, maybe some of the deals that were made or some of the things that we just sort of let get away from us need to be corrected and that the money is better spent in classrooms. But I just think that those walk limits seem way too far for me. So, I just wanted to bring that up now so that everybody's prepared for it.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, we have Vice Chair Coburn and then we have trustee Ward.
So, wow. I know, right? So, kind of something similar that trustee Wilson touched on and I just meant ask the superintendent. I'm just my not my concern, but I'm just wondering what the relationship is like with TransLink because as trustee Wilson has pointed out, we don't have very good transit service out here in Langley. I do know that many of our high schools, the bus driver shows the public bus driver shows up and says to the kids like, you're not getting on and there's no second bus coming. So, this is not our fault. We're not transit or TransLink. But I'm I am wondering if there is any thought or movement towards looking at some kind of partnership so that we can talk to them about what we're going to need to pick up the slack to trustee Wilson's point because, you know, some kids who do have to walk four point four to high school might opt for a bus if that bus was A, there or B, had space for them. So, I'm wondering if there's anything that you can share about that.
So, in the case of TransLink, they have made efforts at Walnut Grove. They do have one that I think runs between Topham and and to Walnut Grove Secondary area and they've tried we've contacted them about trying to run them close to Bell scheduled times. The reality is the bus service in the valley, not just Langley, is not very good. And so, there just isn't enough, especially in our outlying areas where it's once an hour and how do you link that up? So, we will certainly have our transportation managers say, here, there's a change we're making. There is a cost associated with that also. So, so sometimes these costs here were meant to be in line with what you would pay if you had to take transit. So, you know, you might come off even a little better this way because in terms of at least lines up, but we'll we'll pursue it. But I think the reality is the lack of infrastructure around TransLink in the valley that we're living in and that's that's the sad part. So, unless the provincial government puts more money into that part of it, it may be a tougher tougher solve for us because of it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. And that's something that maybe we can look at as we're moving forward, how we can work with councils and maybe UBCM and TransLink, maybe set something up to to have those conversations. That is a great question. So, now, over to trustee Ward.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. It's excellent. A couple of thoughts in line with the other trustees, actually. This is obviously a tough change for people and we have to kind of embrace different methodologies to save some money. But so, a couple of questions that I have here. I'll try to be quick. I know it's almost ten. But one is, are we planning on on a on doing a cost of living adjustment annually? Because these are round numbers. It's what everybody else does. My other work, I had to adjust some prices on certain things at one time and they were all low across the province, in fact. And then everybody's looking to other people, what are you doing? Because it's not really actually capturing the cost. So, are we going to be a leader in that regard? I know it's tough initially because we're doing four hundred and six hundred, but do you plan on going, well, you know, in a couple of years, we're going to do four hundred and twenty-five or something like that? So, that's question number one. And then the question number two is what do we what do ISP students pay for busing?
So, as far as the cost of of living and making those adjustments, currently, the the cost, I think superintendent Stewart's already talked about it, is in line or or below what they what students we paying for transit. We're not in the business of making money and that's not what we're looking for. We're just looking for some cost recovery based on the fact that we're providing a service above and beyond what we would be for for students. And I think, again, at the end of the day, it's the the cost that we could charge students will never really equal the the actual cost of transportation. And so, we're never going to get to that place. We just got to get to a place where we can make it efficient, understand that that we have a role as far as our eligible riders are concerned, and we do our very best to accommodate as many courtesy riders as we can through our processes. Oh, international students, four hundred dollars per student is what the charge will be for for international students.
Okay. Thank you. So, that does conclude our speakers list on this item. So, the motion for the board is that the Board of Education receives the report on conveyance of students for information as presented. Could I please get a move it moved by Vice Chair Coburn, seconded by trustee Perot. All those in favor? Motion's carried. All right. So, we have concluded our items related to the Secretary of Treasury and Superintendent's items onto new business. Any new business?
I've got some new business.
Oh, trustee Ross. Okay.
Yes. So, I just wanted to bring to the board, I'd like to get.
Item. So, section sixty-seven dash four of the School Act, a majority of the board may elect a new chair or a vice chair at any time. So, I'd like to hold an election tonight for the position of vice chair. So, this has.
So, something like that does require a majority of the board. So, in order to have an item like this added to the agenda, there would have to be a majority of the board. So, I would need a secondary for that, seconded by trustee Perot. All right. So, the board has to vote in order to hold that. So, you would need majority of the board to support that. So, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Motion's carried. All right. So, the board has voted under section sixty-seven, the School Act, to hold that election for vice chair tonight. So, in order to do that, you would now have to have motions or you'd have to have nominees for vice chair. So, is there anybody who would like to nominate vice chair tonight? Boards voted to hold that election.
Is it appropriate for me to do that?
If you'd like to nominate somebody, go for it.
I trustee Todd.
Okay. Any other nominations? Uh, trustee Ward. Okay. So, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Third and final time? Yes? Okay. Trustee Wilson. So, final call for nominations. Just. Justie Perot. Justie Perot. All right. So, we have four nominations. Nominations are closed for seat of vice chair. Secretary Treasurer would be prudent to have some ballots, please. So, for the seat of vice chair, there are four names. Please list the names for vice chair and ballots will go by process of elimination if there's a tie or if there isn't a majority until their majority comes forward. Yes, we have trustee Perot.
I would like to have my name removed from the ballot, please.
That's fine. Yeah, absolutely. All right. So, there are three names and you can refuse a nomination. So, there are three names. So, there is trustee Todd, there's trustee Coburn, and there is trustee Wilson. Yes. Okay. Trustee Coburn would like to remove her name. So, two names tonight are trustee Todd, trustee Wilson for the office of seat of vice chair. And so, okay, trustee trustee Wilson. Okay. So, trustee Todd is vice chair by affirmation. There will be no vote. All right. So, we are now on to trustee comments. Trustee Wilson, any trustee comments?
Wow. Where do I comment? What a surprising evening this has turned out to be. Obviously, some of us are more surprised than others, but I just want to wish everybody a good evening and thank you for coming out.
Justie Ross.
I think I've talked enough, Hank.
Justie Todd.
So, I did want to mention, of course, it's the season of musicals and high schools get out, as well you know, and it's our last public board meeting before spring break. So, I appreciate that it's time to recharge and perhaps in some situations, get away, go on a holiday and get ready for the final term of this school year. Thank you.
Trustee Ward.
Yeah. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in, all our thousands out there. I think we had a great presentations tonight, one obviously with respect to diversity and inclusion. And I'm proud of being part of a district that supports what we're what we're supporting. And musicals, to echo your comments, I think it's great that we I have not yet gone, I admit it, but I'm looking forward to attending some. And great presentations on on transportation and technology. Who knew everybody'd be so interested in technology? Thanks.
Trustee Perot.
I was going to say no comment, but I do want to thank trustee Coburn for her time as vice chair over the last year and a half and for stepping up for the leadership during that time and for the motion that went through tonight unanimously. It was a very important motion so that that deserves acknowledgement and I wish everybody a good night.
All right. No comment? Okay. All right. So, I would like to just say that we have provincial council this weekend and there were some great conversations coming forward out of provincial council and including the opportunity to have maybe some conversations coming forward with UBCM about greater partnerships to facilitate opportunities for schools to acquire school sites. There's also coming down the radar is accessibility legislation that has a potential to, you know, impact districts. So, as a board, we will be watching that legislation very closely. And there is a potentially out of the Capitol Working Group that our district that I serve on will be a survey coming forward to look at how that can better be improved. So, those are important things coming down the radar. There's some great work going on by boards and I would like to echo my thanks to Vice Chair Coburn, trustee Coburn for her work as vice chair and welcome trustee Todd into the role of vice chair and it's board. I'm looking forward to the great work that we've been doing going forward. And with that, we do now open up our comments. And I do need to go through my spiel because any time I don't go through my spiel, then I then I regret it. So, just like to remind everybody that question period is provided board meetings for the public to have an opportunity to ask questions and clarification. We want to ensure that those asking questions can do so and so we do have some guidelines that we ask everybody to follow. So, the questions need to be directed at myself, chair, not to staff. They need to be directed, they need to be related directly to the topic on the agenda. They need to be succinct, focused, and not a statement. They may not be asked if they are related to personnel or directed at an individual trustee. And they may not be asked if they are related to contract negotiations. The above directions are provided for in policy twelve oh four. So, with that, I'd like to open questions. Please, please state your your name. I know every time we have to ask you that, but please do.
Do I have to touch anything?
No, you're.
Okay.
It disappeared.
Hi. I have three questions tonight.
Oh.
Sorry. I now have five questions tonight. You need my name? Really? It's not required by the bylaw?
Well, it's just a rule on the fly.
A rule on the fly? You can have a rule on the fly. Hi, I'm John Smith. My first question is, in regards to the payment schedule for the busing fees, is it collected at the package? So, I can't direct that. I'm wondering if it's correct, collected at the beginning of the year or if it's paid on some payment schedule throughout the year? Obviously, as you spoke to the 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 cost and the fees, the services aren't rendered, you know, all at once. So, I was just curious as the collection schedule for those fees.
So, that sounds like that would be definitely a staff question. So, is anybody able to answer that tonight or would that be something that we would need to get back to our question asker for? So, we will need to check those details out to make sure they're correct. So, we will have somebody get back to you. So, question two.
Cool. The second one, two budget questions because, you know, why not? I was just trying to follow quickly as you were going there, Brian. On statement four, the big jump, the nine million in the tangible cap from deferred revenue cap, what was the change between the original and the amended budget? Yeah, there's like it goes from nine to eighteen mil the in the tangible cap section. Yeah, there's like, it goes from nine to 18 mil, the, in the tangible cap section. It's coming from the deferred revenue, the deferred recognition piece? Oh, okay, great.
Right, have that conversation just at the end of the meeting and sit down and answer that one for you. Question number three now?
The third question was around the instructional piece. I noticed there was an $11 million, but a 5% increase there, but it was unclear to me if the, we can trace it through later. I'm just trying to understand what the gap there was without the detailed schedule that were in the slides. Also, fourth question-ish.
So with question three, that'll be something we get back to you with. Okay, so last question?
Last question, which is like kind of slightly administrative. Can you guys include the slide decks in the posted agenda? It's really hard to like follow along when they're not put in the package when the agenda is put on the website.
Okay, so that's something that we'll have to look at.
Yeah.
I want to answer that one right away, just, I don't know how that works, but definitely something to be taken into consideration as we're, as we're always continuously looking to improve meetings. Is that all the questions?
Technically, I'm going to have five, so my fifth and final question is, how's everyone doing?
We're doing great. It's good, it's a great night. It's almost spring break. Thank you, you have a great night. Is there any other questions? Seeing no other questions, okay, thank you. With that, could I please get a motion to adjourn at 10:09 PM? That end of the table is busy, so moved by Trustee Wilson, seconded by Trustee Todd. All those in favor? All right, good night, everybody.